Mayor, President. Deputy Mayor Dexter. Here. Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Kid. Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Moran. Councilmember Michelle Norman.
Here.
Madam Joyce.
President.
Lady Lois Simpson Line. Thank you. I know that Jeanne Moran has asked to be excused, and I believe that we're waiting for Councilmember Kid to join us on the phone.
I'm going to excuse Councilmember Moran.
So. Okay, a further discussion? All those in favor? Let the motion please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, we've got a couple of separate matters here. So we will begin with Indigenous Peoples' Month. So if you can join me up front. We had President Charles here from the Lower Alwakon Tribe.
Madam here, I apologize for the pleasure.
Sorry, we're going to have to do this. Start it again, sorry. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I don't see we were going to have President Councilmember. She was? No, I can't see her. She was down. But this is President Charles. She's a tribe chairwoman for the Lower Alwakon Tribe. And let me read this proclamation, recognizing the month of October as Indigenous Peoples' Month and the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day to promote tolerance, understanding, and friendship, and to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination stemming from colonialization. Whereas, the city of Port Angeles recognizes that it sits on colonial ancestral lands and recognizing the Kowloon people have lived on this land since time immemorial. And whereas, the city values the many contributions Indigenous peoples have made to our community with their knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, art, and the deep cultural influences that have shaped the character of our city. And whereas, the city of Port Angeles recognizes that systemic racism towards Indigenous peoples perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating health, education, and social crisis. And whereas, the city of Port Angeles joins a growing number of cities that have permanently recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, creating an opportunity to promote appreciation, tolerance, and understanding, friendship, and partnerships among all people. And whereas, the Port Angeles Main Library will host a welcome performance by the Lower Alwakon Tribe's song and dance group at 5:15, and a presentation by Elanah Machado about her Makaw ancestry at 6:00 p.m. on the 14th of October. And whereas, the Peninsula College will distribute readings from artist Cathy McGregor of the Jamestown's Kowloon Tribe until November 21st, and will host a reception in the House of Learning, the Peninsula College's longhouse, to meet the artist and view the exhibits on Wednesday, October 2nd, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day is a day to learn, to observe, to create, and to connect, that Port Angeles School District's curriculum fosters an education that is diverse and that honors Kowloon culture, among many others. The district will continue to support students' learning throughout enriching activities and a rich curriculum. Now, therefore, I, Sissi Group Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim the whole month of October as Indigenous Peoples' Month and the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Port Angeles, and encourage all to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the Indigenous peoples in our region, to learn more about the history of Indigenous peoples and cultures, and to continue efforts to promote the well-being and growth of our Indigenous community. So, thank you, the presidents, for being here. Would you like to say?
Sure. We would really, really like to raise our hands up to the Port Angeles Council. I know my back, you guys, sorry. But in regards to making this happen in Kowloon territory here, and we're very humbled and honored to have been working with you as partners and collaborating some of the projects that we have going on here, and continue to educate the surrounding communities and having the opportunity with our youth and having the ability for them to outreach to know the history of where they come from. Because our villages, not only here, we have five known villages over in Canada. That's where my grandmother is from, from my mother's side. So Swamow Nation, Beach Bay, and some of the other areas, that we have different territories just as much. But we're very humbled, and we thank the mayor, as well as the council and the staff that's been behind the scenes, as well as the surrounding community of Port Angeles and others. So, I'm being on behalf of our communities. Thank you.
So, we're going to begin by reading a proclamation in recognition of Resilience Awareness Month. So whereas, there is compelling scientific evidence of a correlation between negative childhood adverse experience, or Aces, or toxic stress, and whereas adverse childhood experiences include such experiences as physical, sexual, or verbal abuse, physical and emotional neglect, witnessing domestic violence, losing a partner or separation, losing a parent to separation or divorce, or having a feminine member who's experiencing mental health issues, struggling with substance abuse and/or incarceration. And whereas, in Kowloon County, 62% of the residents report having experienced at least one adverse childhood experience, and over 33% of residents report having three or more. And whereas, the research indicates the more toxic stress a person has experienced, the greater his or her risk of social, emotional, behavioral, and physical health challenges leading to school suspension, increased dropout rates, expulsion, tardiness, absenteeism, bullying, unemployment, decreased functional workdays, homelessness, incarceration, domestic violence, chronic disease, and substance abuse. And whereas, adverse childhood experiences are at the root of our most costly community issues associated with 78% of ID drug use, 69% of mental health illness, 67% of suicide attempts, 65% of alcoholism, 62% of domestic violence and homelessness, 61% of adult incarceration, 54% of prescription drug abuse, 26% of cardiovascular disease, 24% of cancer, 17% of asthma, and 15% of diabetes. And whereas, resiliency is the antidote, and there is compelling scientific evidence that being able to rely on relationships to access resources and support in the moment of need can transform a potentially toxic experience into intolerable. And whereas, resiliency needs to be nurtured throughout the lifespan and is built throughout supportive relationship with caring adults and experiences that strengthen our core adaptive skills, including regulating emotions, managing stress, planning mental flexibility, decision-making, creating sustained relationships. And whereas, local leaders from the Children's Youth and Family Services, Kowloon County Health and Human Services, Kowloon County's prosecuting officers, First Step Family Support Center, Jamestown Family Health Clinic, Little Rhythm's Learning Center, Lower Alwakon Tribe, Luthard's Community Services, North Olympic Healthcare Network, Parenting Matters Foundation, Port Angeles School District, Prevention Works, Colliut Valley School District, Salish, FYSPR2, United Way of Kowloon County, Washington State Department of Health, Washington State University Extension Support and Formation. And whereas, Kowloon Resiliency Project has a vision of a community where each person flourishes and all parents raise their children with consistency and nurtures to develop resilience, with the goal to mobilize our community through dialogue and action to prevent adverse childhood experiences in the next generation through building individual and community resilience. Now, therefore, I, Sissi Group Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim October of 2019 to be Resilience Awareness Month in Port Angeles, and urge all our residents to become informed about adverse childhood experiences and their impact on development and long-term health outcomes to integrate these principles into our everyday work and practice, and to otherwise support the work of the Kowloon Resilience Project as a community of hope and human. And here, I'm going to pass the mic on and let her introduce herself, because I know we're going to mess this up.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Port Angeles City Council. Your willingness to support one of the most pressing underlying public health issues shows forethought about preventative community awareness. And also, we are humbled and honored to celebrate the same month of Indigenous Peoples' Month. My name is Minnie Whalen. I'm the manager of the Kowloon Resilience Project of the United Way of Kowloon County. As you proclaimed, resilience is the solution to adverse childhood experiences. And how do we develop that resilience? We're doing it through education and mobilizing our community. The single most common factor for children who develop resilience is at least one stable, committed relationship with a supportive parent, caregiver, or adult. I can be that adult. You can be that adult. We can be those adults. We hope this will prompt the citizens of Kowloon County at Port Angeles to take action to build more resilience. Thank you for proclaiming the October as Resilience Awareness Month in Port Angeles.
Well, this is the first part of the conference period. So we will begin with one angle.
Many of you, I am sure, are aware of the 32 Australian shepherd dogs that were trapped on the deceased woman's property several months back. While they were apparently bred at one time, the dogs were kept fed but outside constantly and never socialized. All were extremely fearful of people. I bring this up to point out how the community effort became joined to save these dogs. It has been a long road, and we have managed to work with these dogs enough to get many of them adopted, and we're very proud of that fact. Or we've transferred the dogs to dog hammonds where they can live out the rest of their lives in peace. The other reason why I wanted to talk to you about numbers is the same day that we took in the majority of those Aussie dogs, we also received 10 owner surrenders. Taking many dogs in at a time is not unusual for OPHS. And I have brought this year's annual report to share some of those facts with you. But what I wanted to talk to you is that in Port Angeles alone, we average about 42 owner surrenders a month, with our highest months being in the summertime being 64, 73, and 69 animals surrendered during the month from citizens of Port Angeles. This does not count the rest of the animals that we take in, which are sprays from Port Angeles, which amount to about 80 in 2018 alone. So many of the animals we receive at OPHS need surgeries or extensive medical care. And I'm proud to say that we take care of these animals and really do save their lives. I'd like to say we have a 96% save rate because we are a non-kill shelter, and we have a 100% affection rate. What I think we need to work on as a community is a reduction of owner surrenders. In 2018, owner surrenders averaged 48% of intake from Port Angeles citizens. So far, in 2019, we've seen an uptick in these numbers of 63%. We could do something about that. In my humble opinion, it'll take some education, and we want to keep pets in homes. To that end, as our conditional use permit runs out, and it's our requirement to build a new building, we will be building a 1,000-square-foot community room so we can hold additional trainings and help put that mission forward. I hope that you find this brief explanation of the things that we do and the lives we save to be informative. And I thank you. We're very honored to be a part of this community.
Jane Pedersen.
Oh, I'm the pastor.
Okay. Lisa Hoff.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the council. I'm here to speak to you again on the need for aid and shelter for the homeless. As Richard comes to promise, we have noticed, I have noticed many of my friends and fellow homeless people getting very sick. We have no more or dry place to go, so we are left outside in the cold, bad weather. We need a place to go to keep dry and to look for work and to stay productive. As the weather gets colder, I worry that some are beginning to get very sick and continue to get sicker. They spend their days wandering downtown trying to stay dry. If we have no money, it's hard to just stay somewhere because all the businesses have posted no littering signs, which is completely understandable. I am asking for your sincere consideration in helping us get a day shelter before winter truly hits. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. So before you leave the podium, could you state your name?
My name is Lisa Hoff. And yes, I live in Port Angeles. Thank you so much.
No problem. Gina Stamper?
Gina.
Gina, sorry.
So my name's Gina Stamper, and I live in Port Angeles. I'm a local business owner and a mom. And I have some questions. I don't know if you guys answer questions during the conference.
No, you usually just hear your and then we'll probably point you to a staff that will be able to answer your questions.
Okay, so I have some questions regarding 5G in our community. I've recently been made aware that the 5G hardware has been put up at the park at Cary Blake in Squim. And so, obviously, I'm concerned about whether they're going to be coming to Port Angeles and to our cell phone towers here, which are at Shane Park and up by the college where kids play and our youth are going to school to get their education. My questions are, you know, the time is running on that. And if you guys have thought about the health effects that these are going to have on our community. I didn't know if you knew, but Switzerland has gone live with 5G. And despite strong community opposition, the people are revolting because as soon as that tower was turned on, people started experiencing similar and unusual symptoms: loud ringing in the ears, intense headaches, unbearable earrings, insomnia, chest pains, fatigue, and an overall not feeling well. So what I wanted to know is, you know, everybody's thought about this. Have you looked into it? Have you done your research? Is it really worth the money that you would get that are putting these up on your cell phone towers? Because I'm sure there's compensation. It's not just about faster scrolling, about having the next best thing, the next best iPhone. We're talking about humanity, your friends, your coworkers, your family. These are your people, your, you know, your citizens. They have gone live in places in the United States. And I've heard that, you know, because they're usually on city property, near schools and parks, that children have been getting tumors from these cell phone towers, the 5G. And I just would like to get ahead of it before it comes to our community. I think that it will probably eventually get here. But if we could postpone it or until there is more study done on the health effects that it's going to take on our children. Please do your research right now for yourselves. Because if you're talking about your families too, you know, and you guys are the ones who, I think, would have say on it, so.
Thank you so much, your name. Thank you. Jason Parkinson.
I have to figure out here. My hands don't work, so there's a little bit of shrink with my mic up here.
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent, thank you so much. Thank you. So I'm Jason Parkinson. I live in Squim. And I do motivational public speaking. And I go to medical schools and get asked to speak there. I'm also part of the 5G support network to, as opposed, tends to 5G and smart meters. I wanted to share with you just real briefly, because I know we just have a quick minute on this. This has been something I've been very passionate about myself for a couple of years. I studied quant biology and how cells are affected by electromagnetic frequencies. And I've become friends with some of the smartest people that are in these different fields. Jack Cruz, who is a brain surgeon, a word for a brain surgeon. Dr. Stephen Sinatra, a heart surgeon. And also, Sam Millham. He's an epidemiologist. He was studying electromagnetic frequencies for Washington State Department of Health. I think he was the director, if I remember correctly. He's now retired. And he's learned, along with these other people, that these frequencies, they really do a big effect on the human body and the human cells, the psychology, and all these different things. I personally have testified to that because it has affected my health dramatically. And so I started to study this stuff and buy a lot of the meters and test and see what it does. We have our own dark field microscope, a high-powered dark field microscope, so our kids can see what it does to the human cells and the blood cells. So I know firsthand what this does. And I was definitely aware of the 5G tower that was just installed in Squim. I actually spoke to the technicians that were installing it as they were installing it. And I'm very concerned about this. I could go into great depth of all the different thousands of hours I've spent on studying this stuff and consulting with a lot of the different brain surgeons, heart surgeons, epidemiologists. But you guys have the power and the ability to make the choices of whether we were going to allow this. And I know many of us have families here, and we care about our community. I can assure you from the very bottom of my heart, this is something that you do not want to have in our community at all. And I really hope that you guys take this serious. If there was the biggest thing I could choose of something that I'd be concerned about, it's about this global network. It's not about the faster speeds, and it's not about the money that's going to come to it. It's about how it's going to affect our human bodies and our minds. So I just would like to plant those seeds of, you know, and hope that maybe when you have time, you can consider making the right choices about this kind of stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address senior members? All right, so we will move on to late items.
Madam here, we do have one late item in that prior to adjournment of this evening, we do need to have a closed session relative to collective bargaining. We can have that in the very end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right. And it is 6:30, so we will move on to the public hearing. It is the S30 percent. So we'll begin with the ordinance adopting utility rates for 2020 electric, water, wastewater, solid waste, strong water, and alcohol.
Madam here, council, I'd like to start this item off. I just want to express appreciation to the hard work that our finance department, our public works department, and others put into both the methodology as well as the rate ordinances to get developed and make sure that ultimately we have a very responsible approach to city utilities moving forward. So tonight is the first reading of the ordinances that propose new utility rates for 2020 and beyond. And first, I'm going to turn it over to Serena Carazosa, our finance director, to provide additional details. I do want to emphasize to council that being that it is the first reading this evening, we very much appreciate hearing any issues of concern or questions this evening so that we can ensure we have the final ordinance prepared at your next meeting on, I believe, October 16. And that would, or sorry, October 15. And that would enable us time to make any corrections that are necessary with the goal of ensuring that ultimately these utility rates are built into the 2020 budget. Thank you.
Good evening, and good evening, all members. So it makes sense, this is part of the process that we started back in the day where we're looking at the methodologies for each of these utilities. So tonight, you're really going to see this in the whole circle as we take the 2020 budget and we apply it to the methodologies. So tonight, because we've changed so many of the methodologies in a different category now, we don't really have a propensity to increase or decrease, but we do have quite a few examples that will show you how different classifications are going to be affected by these methodologies. Two things to note before you, a couple of items. One is the ordinance for the wastewater utility rates. And that was included in your packet in the third, so we apologize for giving that to the lead. And then the other is a corrected copy[1618.32] And then the other is a corrected copy of the electric ordinance. And we think that it changed in an error, should be kind of equally, those were calculation error that we caught and corrected by the amount of packets. So I'll take that. I too would like to name the whole of our department or their whole name and the sources, as well as the utility departments, all that are involved. So that management was very separate, should be our costs and capital accounts to go through all these.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank the city council and the utility advisory committee and the public school department and everybody on staff for taking the time to go through the methodology and your questions and discussion. It all led to some very good methodologies. And so tonight we are going to use those methodologies with the 2020 budget, as Serena said, and some forecasts for 2021 and 2022 to come up with these rates. And the additional item in the electric packet, you'll see a lot of yellow. That is the 2021 rates that were calculated. And so those are in there as well. As I mentioned, the methodologies approved by the UAC and the council have been used to calculate the rates. We will walk through some expected changes to customers' bills and a range of consumption usage. We're going to use some examples that are averages first and then some that are actual customer bills, low, medium, high, the different ranges, how they fit into the range of customers. And we do have a phase-in approach that we're recommending for electric. So first, all of, this is averages. This is just, you know, an average electric amount, an average water amount. It's not one customer specifically gets at these. But this first slide is showing you if these three customers had electric at 650 and water at 200, that for usage components, what their bills would be. And all three of them go down. Of course, the discount customers only had discounts for electric previously, so now they have it on almost every utility. So their bills are going to go down significantly because it's being applied to the other utilities, as you had requested. So of our 8,900 roughly non-discount customers, about just 1,1500, around 16% fit into this low consumption category, low usage category. The bulk of the customers fit into the medium category. It's about 57% with a maximum billing volume of 2,000 kilowatt hours. And it'd be a very high water rate in there. Most people are well below the 1,000, but we concluded up to 1,250 for the medium category. And so that shows that that bill goes up just slightly. And in the high consumption, and we actually do have, now this is, this volume is at the high end of the high, or at the lower end of the high end of the high consumption. We have some pretty high consumptions. And so those bills would go up as well. So now we can get into some actual customers. So we have a low consumption customer from the lower end of usage. They have 691 average kilowatt hours a month and 183 average cubic feet of water a month that they use. And their bill would go down 7.5%. This is a person that doesn't qualify for the low discount rates, but is at that lower end of the people that are in the discount area. And then we have a low usage customer that's a 35% discount. As you can see, their bill goes down quite a bit. The 25% discount actually has some higher usage users. In this particular case, the 35% discount, those rates were similar to the other ones, 694 kilowatt hours of electric and 140 cubic feet of water. In the 25% discount, we actually have some higher usage customers in there, so we pulled one of those. Their average usage is 2,765 kilowatt hours a month and the water's 954, so I'm figuring that must be a pretty big family. And so their bill is still going to go down 10%.
That's actually because of the discount, but it's part of other utilities that was not part.
Correct. In the medium consumption area, this first one is a family of seven. And so you can see their billing volumes in there and their bill's going down slightly. The next one is just another high consumption user. It was higher in the electric. It was hard to find somebody that was both high in electric and high in water. So again, their bill is going down too. But remember that the COSA was accurately putting the dollars by the classes. So, you know, residential's got their allocation, but commercial and municipal and government have theirs, which may be higher. So then the last two slides here about customers is this is just kind of five customers at a glance in that medium area, that family of seven, a small house with one person, a small family with a home business, a person that has high water and normal electricity, you know, average for everybody that very high water, and a family of two with a large house. So you can see in four cases they're going down. The high water one is going up, so they don't all go down. And then we also looked at the 35% discount area. We have two average customers. We have somebody that's high electric and high water with weekly trash. Most, almost everybody in these that we picked was every other week trash, this one was weekly trash. And we have two apartment people that are electric only. Because I know that there was one council member that wanted us to make sure that we analyzed the apartments to see, you know, what the impact was on them. So in this case, everybody's rates overall, all of their utilities together goes down. So we finished residential. Now we're looking at...
Yes, go back to residential. So one of the biggest changes that our proposal seems is the discount. The discount being applied to other utilities other than just like here. So it seems like, you know, I don't want to be talking about like other services, but it seems like the people that are generally going to pay more and people that don't like the discount that have higher water use. That's probably, I think that's also because of how we calculate wastewater.
Yeah, that's true, because the wastewater goes on, yes, the wastewater follows the water usage as well as the CSO.
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's kind of our COSA step. I just wanted to make sure that my analysis was like not wildly incorrect.
And we titled this general service one base. I realize that's the electric term, but we just have all of the other utilities follow along with the electric in this area. Obviously, electric is the bigger part of the bill in total. So for our low consumption user that is commercial, their bill is going up about, in this case, $48 a month in the first scenario. Now, this is based on averages. And when we get into wastewater, we, each customer is specific and their line will dictate the cost. So in the case of the low consumption user, their bill will probably not go up this month, this amount, because they might be a 5/8 inch line, which means that their amount for the wastewater is lower than this. And it actually, I think we looked at one of the cases and it actually only goes up like $10 a month in total. Medium consumption goes down a little and the high consumption goes down a lot. Then we get to the three face and again, the same thing. The wastewater is big here and so we'll have to look at that on an individual pipe size. And we'll see that when we go through the wastewater. We're almost there to look at wastewater in detail. And a medium consumption user in the commercial area for three face goes up about 5% and the high consumption goes down about 17%. Again, those are average, averages, those aren't actually any one customer. That's just applying average rates. So getting into the actual proposed rates and their changes. Taxes are split between fixed and variable. That is a methodology change with the methodology that you approved, that the taxes would follow the different rates in their area. The rates have been averaged over two or three years to provide stability to the residents. And the electric utility recommends a phase-in because you'll see when you see the COSA, which is, I think, one of the first COSAs you're going to see, of how much that changed. And so we're doing a 10-year phase-in on that to get the rates between fixed and variable. As was in your packet, one year rates for water and wastewater, two year rates for electric, the two solid wastes and stormwater, and a three-year rate for medic one. Some other changes in your packet. As Serena mentioned, you do have the 2,021 rates for electric now, as well as the water pumping rates that weren't in your first pass and the corrected municipal rates that were calculated earlier. And that was just the four rates for the traffic and streetlights, the city's security camera system and the emergency management system. Medic one, we changed the ordinance to reflect three years. We actually didn't put the end date in there, so with the next version around, it'll say what it goes through. And we will be making a correction for something that we found today with two usage components that change two classes and they, that will lower rates in most other areas. So you will have that to look at for your medic one. And then there was an item that actually isn't part of the COSA, but is a small, there's 16 people that use a fixture rate instead of the wastewater rates. And we're going through all of those. Some of those actually would be more, they would have more benefit if they switched to the regular wastewater rate, so we're going through this rate. So we're phasing that. We're recommending that we phase that fixture rate out. But leave those ones that are in there right now in there if they still wish to use it. Okay, so we get into electric. The biggest change in the electric, one of the big changes was that there's no longer a residential energy program from the VPA. So that increases our costs by $693,000 a year. And the capital funding, the funding for the utility is now going to be 1.1 million. The utility is going to fund capital spending. However, it is important to note that the light operation building is coming from the source. And the phase-in, as we talked about. And as soon as we're clear on the direction of the rates, then we will calculate out the non-taxable rates for the electric utility. The others will be calculated in the ordinances. So the electric COSA. This is a methodology for the COSA. For residential, the base was $20.10. And now the base in the COSA would be $45.32. But the consumption rate was eight cents and it would be five cents in the COSA. So in most people's bills, it does average out to very close to the same amount of money. It's just fixed versus variable. But we are recommending a phase-in approach of that. So here's the phase-in. So we have the comparison of 2019 and 2020, phased in over 10 years, and then 2021 as well. So it's the ramp up. And that's what we've based everything on, is the 2021 figures. Water utility. The water utility used to have different rates for residential for the pipe size. We're recommending that we go to one uniform rate for the pipe size for residential and the usage components, but we're also putting in the discounts for both the base fee and the usage. And there is the PUD rates. Those are based off those, but where the UAC see these rates are slightly different. It was discovered that the base, the rates for the PUD were tied to block one and they should have been tied to block three. So that's, it was brought out by several people that that just never did make sense and it didn't. Continuing on with water for the commercial area. These are still by pipe size. And so this is the base rate. It's going down in some areas, it's going up in other areas. And then the usage rate is going down as well. Municipal, pretty much similar to commercial. It's slightly different because of taxes. And irrigation. Again, some of the rates going down, some are going up and the usage rate is going down. Wastewater. So wastewater is by pipe size. So in previous times wastewater was, if you were under 430 cubic feet, you were at one rate and if you were over 430 cubic feet a month, you were at another. And so the $33.90, there isn't an average. The 5/8 inch line, I think, is 33, 34. And there's other lines that have different amounts of them depending on the size of the line. But the new thing in here, of course, is the usage component. And the discount. The commercial rates, you'll see a big change there. Again, these are by pipe size, so these are averages as well. And maybe what I should do is just get down to the pipe size thing so you could see residential, commercial and municipal. So you could see that average was 73, but, you know, the 5/8 inch, you're really 33, 34. The 3/4 inch, 41, 76. So it's just the average is a higher amount, but there are people with lower base rates. The usage rates are all lower. And this is showing you the commercial and municipal rates. You'd see, most of the people are in that 5/8 inch area. Solid waste collections. Residential rates, we now again have the discounting here, so the weekly rate is going down. The every other week rate is going up slightly. And in this particular case, we applied the, so you could see a comparison, even though we don't have the 25 and 35% in 2019, we put it in there just so you could see a comparison of what it would be if we had had it. And the solid waste transfer station. So this two year rate is an average. We're holding the yard waste tires, asbestos soils and metals at the white goods, at the current rate plus 4.2%. The increase had not been applied to these classifications since 2014, so it was time to take them off. Stormwater. The UAC had asked if we could present two options for stormwater. One thing, so there were the original rates that we presented to the UAC that are the top, which are the rate is based on 3,000 ERUs, but a cap of 15. The cap used to be 10. They asked what it would be if the cap was 30. What that does is 135 properties are affected by that cap change. It's about $147,000 spread among them. Twenty of, one of them are affected the most at $3,000 each. It basically doubles. They were at 3,000 and now they're at 6,000, so they're paying $3,000 more each for their property. They do have a lot of surface area to cover. And then another nine are, you know, greater than $2,000, but not the $3,000. And then there's 28 people that have roughly $1,000 more that they would be paying. That was 135.
So you're saying cap of 15 versus cap of 30, is that accurate?
No, it's actually taking the square footage. I think an ERU, a whole 40 people.
Especially, yeah, 200 square feet.
Yeah. And so it's, it's taking what they, what their non-perbious service is dividing it up.
So I would like, so 2019 rates. So if you look at commercial, 687, 687 per what?
Per, in that particular case for the residential, it's for a 3,000 ERU.
So commercial, sorry about that. So they're all the same rates, but it's per ERU?
Yes.
And the cap says it's 30.
The cap right now is 10.
Right, they're going to announce 10, but 2020, okay, so I should look over 2020. So 2020 is 15, 86, 389 for commercial, cap at 30. My understanding of 30 times 15 is that it's around 450. So how are they paying $3,000?
Oh, this is per month. These rates are per month?
So you're talking about a year.
The ordinance, we did change the ordinance to an annual rate, so it actually made more sense rather than doing it a month and making you guys do the math. So we did change the ordinance to show what they would pay per year. So this is what one ERU is, is $15, but somebody might have 30 ERUs.
Right.
Which is what that cap is for. So they're paying 30 times the 15.
So then the maximum that a user can pay is $5,711. I just multiply 15 by 689 times 30 times 12, right?
Yeah.
So that's, you're right, that's a maximum that any one user's going to pay for a year if they have just all the perpious surface in the integrity.
But it's per property. So it's each county's property record property.
So it's per property tax bill.
Yes, it's per property tax bill.
Which...
So like the airport has several people that have different property tax bills that are out there at the airport, at that area that the airport owns. are out there at the airport, at that area that the airport owns.
An analogy of the cap, if we let certain high-consumption users of electricity or water simply not pay for their use of a certain amount of electricity use or of a certain amount of water use, that's my analogy to the cap.
And so, you're looking, when you're dealing with cap, that 30 is the one that covers the greater amount of stormwater coming in?
We decided earlier on this year that by, and I think we made a policy decision to remove the cap, but to phase that removal in. So that's the direction we're going. The question here between capping at 15 ERUs or capping at 30 ERUs is simply a question of how fast we can phase out of the cap.
And then, just to like, reiterate the policy session that I referenced, you pointed out, what, when you have a small cap, you were saying to people that have a whole big load of impervious surface, your, I want to say, stormwater pollution, basically, is being subsidized by residential users who almost never even get to 3,000 square feet of impervious surface with one residential unit. I'm sure my house is getting close to that. But I, I charge one rate, right? Per month, 16, 12, 418 times 112. And so, residents of the city are subsidizing the people that build huge stormparking lots that result in more stormwater pollution than the city has to re-BA or or doesn't re-BA in terms of actual pollution or original streams, that's right. So, I think removing that is great, and the 30 is totally fine with me, and I think that that's a good place to be when we're talking about that phase-in. And I, yes, all of those, I think are great. Hopefully, the ERU going down for us, if that's great.
So, actually, I think I'm unsubstantiated in this, and I hope that if we're removing the cap, we're getting down to zero. Is that correct?
We're not removing the cap. Eventually, we're removing the cap.
Eventually, I mean, that, that's where we want to go. If we're currently at 10, why do we want to move the cap up to 15 or 30? Well, we want to get down to zero.
We don't want to.
No, we want to go up, so that we're capturing everybody.
So we want to get all of them.
Right, so...
With all the residential units.
Right, so the conversation in the UAC was, can we see what the rates, what the difference would be? Question whether 15 was a fast enough track, so what would it look like the difference between 15 and 30?
And I'll just also say that I do not support a discount for stormwater. This is a tax on property owners, and I think that if they're going to be small enough that it's, if you don't feel relevant to either side, so we can surprise you, but I just don't think there should be a discount in this utility.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to go through all 6,500 cap accounts to see if any of our current, roughly 350, discounters actually own the property or not. My inclination is it's probably not even half, but, you know, I don't know that yet. So, that discount is there, but I don't know how much of it would be used.
I was thinking that maybe apartments and apartment complexes that are, I mean, they pass down their cost to the apartment owner, I'm sure.
But the property owner, but we call it back to the discount.
Right.
I mean, I, I, my, I have somewhat of a qualm when applying discounts to all our utilities. I think that if that's a fair, right, just to the rest of the council, that's fine, but when we apply a discount, we're telling all the rest of the users, you have to pay a little bit more. And that's, I mean, I assume that to people that need a discount, I think it's good if you have those in place. At the same time, I think there's a lot of our citizens that aren't in a place where telling them you need to pay a little bit more is manageable, where they're not, they would call back their discount, but they're not that far from calling back their discount. And so, you know, if we had a situation where there was a lot of, you know, utility users who were doing great, and they can afford paying a little bit more too, to apply a discount for a small amount of people that really needed it, that would be fine, but I'm not sure where they're at as a city. So...
Counsel, if I may share some additional information, and I very much respect the fact that the Utility Advisory Committee did make the recommendation to move to the cap of 30. But I want to just share that we've seen, we've had some additional detailed work done looking at what that means and what that can mean to some of our property owners in town. And it could be a substantial impact. I think if you, one of the, one of the goals, again, is to phase it in, so that you don't have that cap scenario any longer, which is a good, a good approach moving forward, and we certainly recommend that. But I think the staff at this time would continue to recommend the 15 cap, recognizing if you look at the fact that for many of these property owners, it's going to be at least a 50% increase, and many of them are entities that actually provide services to this community that are very valued by city council. And when they have, and hold multiple properties, and they're seeing 50% increases just jumping to 15, and then they would see a doubling of the 15 if they moved to 30, it becomes potentially very unaffordable. And having, you know, knowing what it takes to put together a budget for the city of Port Angeles, I know there's a number of entities out there that would greatly appreciate a slower phase-in of this approach.
I'm looking forward to hearing about the public comment today. We've had a conversation as a council about whether we tax federal properties, and I think overall, we agree that we should create a way to do that. Are we saying that they're not, right, all the good too? So, yeah, I'm happy to hear that feedback from people who will be affected by the cap of 15 or the cap of 30.
And I mean, I think what I can say, and that's, I think, you know, I think you may as good of my, of a phase-in that should, the goal of phase-in is to be a smooth transition. At the same time, these are properties that have been subsidized by the public for years, where residential users have paid more than they needed to in their property tax bills because they were subsidizing these users for, I mean, how long may I stormwater utility? I don't know.
Just that I'd rather not go into the property tax, rather than the utility bill.
No, the stormwater is a property tax.
Thank you.
I mean, it's a utility tax. It's the utility that they're being paid, like, because of how we, you know, the property tax.
And in big pictures, it's a way to fund streets without using the general fund. Because it's easier for the city to raise rates of utilities than to raise rates that pre-studied for the general fund. I think the goal is, actually, that's a bad pollution, but...
One, just one point that I wanted to mention is that the stormwater utility is an enterprise fund, so any fees collected by stormwater utility rates have to stay within that fund.
Yes.
And also leads to projects for that ones.
And those projects, so the stormwater drains, all those streets before they connect to the city's wastewater system.
Correct, partially that, and then all of the myriad of LID projects that are permanent parts.
Okay, on to Medic One. We had a very productive meeting this morning, and we found two things that needed to be changed. This is, we didn't want to rush and get the changes in for this meeting, but we should have them done tomorrow, the next day after they get through all the reviews, so that we can release the new numbers from Medic One. What it does is it, it, some rates go down, some rates go up, is what it did. There were some units that weren't in there, so they were too low, so the rates, in most cases, go down a teeny bit.
So just to clarify, it's the assisted living and the group homes, that it will be going up, and all the rest will be going down. Can you just clarify how you're qualifying assisted living versus 24-hour nursing? If you have that for now, if that was...
Yeah, assisted living, I think it's Laurel Place and St. Andrews Place and Hartview Villa, and, and I write, and...
The difference primarily is in the level of care that's provided at the facility, and 24-hour assisted living is that, where they actually have medical professionals who are on duty 24 hours a year.
Okay, so the Utility Advisory Committee, at their meeting last week, they forwarded a recommendation to council for adoption of the proposed rates, if they change the stormwater, to look at the change of stormwater between 15 and 30. And, so, again, we started this process in February, and going through all of the methodologies to determine the rate-setting methodology for each utility. The public hearing regarding the 2020 utility rate adoption was posted in the newspaper on Friday, the 27th. And we are here today with the proposed amendments to the rates to open the public hearing, conduct the first reading, and continue on to October 15th.
Okay, thank you. So, I, you want to read all your orders together, and then we'll open up the questions?
I just have one question.
Okay.
So generally speaking, I'm trying to make sure this right, on, all of these utilities were, were generally followed with the COSA recommended. You know, electric utility is the one that's kind of unique and have their integrity phase-in, and none of the others were really looking at, other than the stormwater, which is especially that.
Correct. And all that phase-in did was it just slowed down the rate that the base went up and the variable went down. So the dollars by class stayed exactly the same in every class. The residential dollars stayed the same, the discount dollars stayed the same, the nonprofit dollars stayed the same. It was just how they were split.
And we're just, I think, just doing that so that we don't see random shocks in utility bills, customers.
That's great. Thank you. Yes, thank you. So we read the ordinances, we've bunched them up. And ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then these sections of chapter 13.12, under the Port Angeles municipal code, relating to utility, to electric utility rates. And ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then the section of chapter 13.20, under the Port Angeles municipal code, relating to utility discounts. And ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then the sections of chapter 13.14, under the Port Angeles municipal code, relating to water rates. And ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then the sections of chapter 13.57, of the Port Angeles municipal code, relating to solid waste processing facility rates. And ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then the sections of chapter 13.54, under the Port Angeles municipal code, relating to garbage collection. And ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then the sections of chapter 13.63, of the Port Angeles municipal code, relating to stormwater utility regulations. And ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then the sections of chapter 13.73, of the Port Angeles municipal code, relating to heavy on service and many more rates. And the last one is the ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then the sections of chapter 13.65, relating to wastewater services rates. I think I got them all.
You may have found this, I'm just following through in chapter 13.63, and the ordinance of, relating to stormwater utility regulation. I'll just...
63, yes.
There are just...
Yes, there's just two options.
I'm looking at versions two, thank you.
So, so let's, counsel, we have another question before we open the public hearing. Okay, so we will open the public hearing regarding the proposed changes, rate changes. So anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the council regarding these proposed rate changes that you just saw, please step up to the mic, state your name, and take the chance.
John Ralston, I live in the city. I have one comment about the ERUs, and I think I need, I certainly need to find some more information out from the staff, but I believe that the ERUs, or some of the comments or concerns, might make the assumption, again, might make the assumption, that this parcel of land is nearly 100% impervious. I could be wrong. I have a five-acre piece of land, so that's over, oh, you know, 220,000 square feet, and there's approximately 2,000 to 3,000 square feet of impervious material there. And I believe that my utility stormwater rate on that right now is about $1,000 a year because of the large size of the parcel that's grass. And so, I believe that my numbers will go up substantially, so I'll have a written comment for you prior to the next public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else who would like to comment on the rates? All right. So, we will continue this public hearing to October 15th, 2019. So, so council, we need to consider the utility, the UAC committee's recommendation to increase the phase-in for the stormwater ERUs to 15 to 30, moving from 15 to 30. So, can we have to decide that tonight, or have we made that part of...
I think we prepared the information for both, so I don't know if they can either decide that tonight.
So do you want to first open the decision, or...
I'm going to first.
On the increase in the cap from 15 to 30, we can decide that also after we hear more comments. Okay, thank you.
I can do that. And also considering the UAC recommendation to re-relieve the electric COSA with the value of...
I'm just going to make a quick comment, that we know that Mars is going off, it's a battery backup that kicks in, so that's why I don't want to say anything about it. It'll go off in eight minutes. Thanks.
So, counsel, the UAC recommendation on the electric COSA methodology?
Is there any staff presentation on that, or are we deciding to...
Staff, do you want to comment on the UAC recommendation for the electric methodology?
They might have mentioned, I believe, a presentation.
Well, I know that, I don't think they have, it hasn't been covered yet, as to exactly, I know that you guys wanted to revisit this in 2020, I mean, 2022, right after the two year. Is that correct? Instead of doing the 10-year...
That was the recommendation of the UAC committee, that's also one that the council doesn't have to make a decision on tonight. That's something that, that is out, you know, at least a year from now, if not two, maybe 2021. And so, it's quite some time away, you do not have to make a decision on that tonight.
So, like that.
I would like to make a petition, if the council doesn't decide on that, what's, what's the city staff's opinion on where that recommendation stands? When we'll look back before the city council.
So I, I appreciate the petition and that comment, because I do think it's important if council does choose to act on it, that it would be appropriate to either act on that at tonight's meeting or at the next meeting. At this point in time, we don't have a trigger or a directive from council to bring that back at a future date. Right now, it is a UAC recommendation to city council. And our finance director may want to add a little bit to that.
That's correct. So the UAC recommendation was to bring back methodology for review, meaning 2021, whereas that was 2022 rates, very rarely looking at what power sources are being installed for a place for a period. So that's just included there because it was the recommendation of the UAC. But we really don't have a presentation on it for you tonight, which is more if that's something you feel like we need to have it at that time.
So, we do need like a trigger to kick it on, so, and it took about six, seven months to go through all the different steps, right? I mean, for the electric utility, how long will it take to leave the whole COSA?
Because we have a COSA in place now, that's obviously much quicker than what's the last one, so we wouldn't be holding it at the same time. But we would need sometimes to prepare that and categorize what's where to present that to council and to UAC.
So would he, well, ask the county, give us a timeline about when we should put a trigger in, so that it gives enough time for... a trigger in so that it gives enough time for public comment and council work on that revision of the electric cost?
We can, and I think we also should just do it. So I move to direct staff reevaluating the electric cost methodology for recommendation of utility by the committee.
So we've got a motion? One second.
I just clarify, I asked for 2022 rates. Do we got any more questions?
Yes. Any further discussion? We've got a motion to the table in a second.
So I'll provide some background for this. This is lacking. In these, in these models, the cost of, cost of service assessments, we said fixed costs to the city should be billed to customer's base rates. Variable costs to the city should be billed to customer's consumption rates. With our electric utility, that to me makes sense where, okay, the costs that require getting the lines, distribution system, pools, transformers, all of that, so that you can actually turn your wire on, turn your supply program, and have power. That's the base rate. The cost of that power, that's the consumption rate. But the catch is, bottom bill we buy our power from does not bill us, you know, per cent of kilowatt. They basically bill us a big fixed rate with some variable rates in there. So the cost that we pay the bottom bill for the power, actually the distribution for the power, is 84% fixed and 15, well, and 16% variable. So it's 13,900,000 fixed and 2,600,000 variable. So when we say that's fixed and that goes to base, while the variable goes to consumption, what we've done is we've said the amount that people pay per kilowatt hour of power is only 14%, I'm sorry, 16% of what we're actually paying in bottom. So it's a finance, and the flip side of this and the challenge, which I appreciate Director Carso's explaining, I just told you this was your last thing, but no. Sorry. Is, it's very hard financially to say, we have this big fixed cost that bottom bill is going to bill us later, but we're going to charge our customers a variable rate, the consumption rate, as to whether or not they use that power. The hypothetical, which I think is a certain hypothetical that is out there, is what if no customers use any power in Port Angeles? Then we wouldn't be getting any of that, and then how would we pay off this big bill that's coming from bottom? I think we can address that and figure out how to do that. I don't think it's fair for us to say, yeah, this is the cost of consumption, but since it's billed to us as the city as fixed cost, we're going to pass it on to our customers as a base cost rather than this consumption cost. And so what this motion is for is, and then it'll back up, so city staff saw that and saw the impact, that basically we're more than doubling our base rate, total line rate. And as of, you know, about the three public comments, we've had these rates, two of them are about that issue. So instead of saying, we're going to do what the model says, we're going to phase in that change every 10 years so that people don't notice the change as drastically. You know, we're not doing that for, well, I guess we're doing, never mind. And so my suggestion, and the reason I made this motion, and what is actually the formal motion of the council, not just our recommendation, I do, I see it's floating out there, everyone will figure it out, is that instead of saying, well, let's just slowly make in the model, let's go back and look at the base assumptions that we made in the model and reevaluate why we're saying that this consumption cost, you know, the cost of the power from bottom bill is being charged as base rather than this consumption. Because that's what we're really doing with this model.
And so I'll provide some of that background, I might not just shut up about it, see. The correct way that we're phasing in provides revenue stability to the utility so that we lower risk and that we have revenue we need when the bills come to pay. And I think that's a reasonable thing to do when you build rates, is to make sure the utility can pay the bills, and that you have, you know, you lower your risk and you give yourself revenue stability. At the same time, I support this motion, because I think there are creative ways that you could, you know, I don't think that you then have to say 100% of that bottom bill base needs to go into variable rate. You could split it to provide some amount of rate stability, increase the base rate slightly, but still have, you know, consumption being what it's up paying for energy consumption. And so I think that we should reevaluate that methodology and not allocate completely the power purchase cost of consumption rather than the base, but some percentage of it that, in a way that will provide us rate stability and revenue stability, I mean, to the utility, but also give incentives for people to have control over their utility bills and lower them by lowering consumption.
Anything else you'd like to say then?
I just like the idea of looking at it again, with enough time to not make everybody feel rushed about having to do it, recognizing that if you're doing all the other stuff, it's nice to have some time to look at this a separate time. And just a little part of me, I think, maybe for me just long enough, we'll have some amazing source for power that isn't bottom. But that's one other thing, so.
And I agree that definitely, I think our base, the base rate is way too high, and we absolutely trust them, so.
And then also, you know, having a base in gives us time that we might need to investigate this, or there may be a lot of other base solutions. So I think that we've done well by phasing in.
All right, so we have a motion to the table in a second. All those who gave the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, and passes to you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you. All right, we are now to the school zone crosswalk safety enhancement public hearing. I think this is a public hearing, so, so staff, share with us.
Thank you, counsel. Madam Mayor, I think that this project, quite simply put, is implementation of a traffic safety camera program and putting it in our capital facility plan. Staff have that direction from the city manager and council. If this was a project that we wanted to evaluate, and the public works department along with the police department, they're evaluating what it would look like to increase safety in our school zones, realizing the capacity that we have as a city to do so. Both the public works department and police department, although I would never dispute the court's view, believe that this is the most effective means to prioritize safety for our youth as they are traveling to school. This program will also allow us to continue down the path of traffic safety cameras that could be installed at a later date. However, those traffic safety cameras in school zones could not be installed without these traffic flashing beacons. So this is kind of step one, and doesn't necessarily bind any future decision. So I think that it's really important to highlight that as well. With that, I would just ask, which you want to add?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, we, the police department, think that the addition of the amber flashing beacons that clearly identify when it's school hours and school zones, it will, will in and of themselves be a big improvement. We're looking forward to having some, you know, comparable data. It's our busiest school zone, proposing applying this, this treatment to it. We, we think if that's all we get, we'd be very pleased with the results.
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, as a parent who delivers a child to Franklin on a regular basis, I have to say that I appreciate the need for it in all school zones, and I, I really have seen a difference between the first two weeks of school, and I don't want to call out specifically college students, because it isn't necessarily all college students, but the speed of how people are driving down Loritzen directly toward the college parking lot has significantly increased since school started. And I think that there might be some education that college could do, but I think this will be an important step, if for no other reason to remind people that they just drove into a school zone. And I do think it may slow everybody down, but I think it will slow a few people down. My question is, based on the memo, and I have to apologize if this being the last minute question, and if I'm just completely missing something, but the resolution that we have is to set up a public hearing, which is different than the recommendation to pass the resolution. Is that what we're doing? We're passing a resolution not to add it, but to open it? The resolution is for a public hearing. So I just want to make sure that we're. So we have to, I rolled into the capital facilities.
So counsel, there may be an error in the resolution. We intend to uphold the public hearing tonight, which satisfies the need to add this item to the capital facility plan.
Okay.
And the now therefore be resolved does hereby amend the CFP, correctly, of the proposed projects, so I don't know if that covers it?
It's just the title problem.
Yeah, it's a title issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question for Chief Smith. Vienna Franklin is fed by multiple streets. Are these flashing amber lights, I mean, are they going on both ends of Loritzen, both ends of Race, both ends of Park? Streets that are beating up like Washington, or?
Yes, every place that we want to advise a vehicle for their entering a 20 mile per hour school zone, every place we've got those signs.
So every place has a 20 mile an hour sign right now?
Yes, more or less. I mean, we would, we might have missed counting the signs in our memo, but that's the idea, is you notify, as has been pointed out, we notify motorists, you're entering a school zone during school hours, and every road access point that's got those state approved signs would be where we would want to put those activated amber systems.
And just as Chief Smith probably knows, but Race Street is also a 20 mile an hour and I think a lot of folks overlook that when they come down that hill.
Which is why we'd be adding an amber system to both ends of Race Street.
All right, so anything comments from the council?
I'll just add, the goal here is not to get revenue from speeders. The goal is to decrease the number of people speeding in places where there's high pedestrian activity, particularly schools where young people might not be as familiar with people wearing vehicles as in other places. So, you know, I had a last week, I was in a, a study talking about how red light capabilities are 10-year high, and traffic cameras, we're already, that's reducing that in certain communities, so improving our aggression, every cost of that execution for speeding and it's kind of, thank you, staff, for what we're doing.
Madam Mayor and counsel, I could, I did notice another error in the resolution, so I'd like to just go ahead and read the two corrections into the resolution of the assistance to council in the beginning of this evening. So if you look at the resolution heading, specifically, we would need to strike the word "setting a public hearing upon." Those words would need to be struck. And then the second, the last whereas statement on page 56, that should read October 1, 2019, rather than September 17, 2019. So again, I do apologize for those errors, but if we didn't know those corrections on the record, they'd be reflected in the motion that council makes.
Right, thank you. So right now, we open the public hearing. So anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this item right now? Yeah. Okay, so we'll read the resolution. So a resolution of the city council for the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending the city's capital facilities plan for 2019 to 2024, which includes the city's transportation improvement program for the years 2019 to 2024. So, as I said, anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this item right now, please step up the mic, state your name, and take your comments.
Maureen Levine, I live in Beaver, Washington. Are you guys talking about adding the red light traffic things where they find you when they take a picture? Because I heard red light, I heard security cameras.
So this begins with the amber lights, but in time, those will be replaced by cameras, yes?
If the council searches.
If the council searches in the future.
By a company that's probably from Arizona that takes 90% of the tickets, including the cameras, yeah?
Well, that's not the public hearing we're having tonight. The public hearing tonight is just about whether we add the flashing yellowish lights in the 20-hour. Thank you. Come back when we get to the other part.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else who would like to address this? All right. So, now, counsel, what is your question?
I'm going to pass the resolution of the capital facilities plan, transportation critical plan, and our staff to cooperate each night, and the third amendment to try and try and.
Second.
All right. And then would the amendments that were written in? Is that, okay, is that a friendly amendment today?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussions? All those who gave a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It passes to you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
Just going to call today and ask for a call, so.
Okay, so, we now, let's move on to the presentation. We have a presentation happening tonight, a presentation by Quack County, Urban Utilities District Commissioner Jim Waddell.
I'm Jim Waddell. I'm a civil engineer, retired from the Army Corps of Engineers after a 35-year career. I spent a lot of different jobs in the Corps, but notably, I was a deputy district engineer in Lawton, Washington, and in charge of the Lower Snake River dams, and the Mary Dam, and several other major dams in the state. Learned a great deal about hydro power and so forth, and since retiring, I've spent a lot of time pouring into the cost of vulnerable power administration and understanding, trying to understand how it is that they're managing their cost and controlling the cost and so forth. That has proved to be quite problematic, but nevertheless, I have, along with some others, have made an attempt at it, and I will be talking about what some of my findings are tonight. The other thing, of course, is I am a public utility commissioner, but I would like to point out for the record, Paul, that I'm not representing the PUD here tonight, nor the Corps of Engineers, but simply my background. Before I start with vulnerable power financial issues, I think it's important to remember what vulnerable power is. They are a power marketing agency for hydro power. So that means they're trying to sell us hydro power. That's what they do. They're salesmen. As such, you should be mindful that you're always talking to a salesman when you're dealing with vulnerable power administration. Now, true, they have a transmission grid, and they're generally well-run and properly funded, but on the power side, they basically are buying, or taking power from the Corps of Engineers and Bureau of Reclamation. And so it's important to realize that they do not have the technical capability to actually estimate the cost of production of power on these dams. It's, they basically do it with models from top-down perspective, which means they catalyze total re-revenues in and total expenses for the whole system, and if there's a difference, they go to the federal regulatory commission to get rate increases. I've oversimplified that, but that's basically the way it works. Now, let's see. To start with, I'd like to point out this guy. This is Elliot Meinger, if you don't know who he is. He is the administrator of the vulnerable power administration, and about a year and a half ago, he made these comments, and, whoops, if I can figure out how to activate the sound on this.
My, is it clicking on the picture?
There is a, there should be an arrow coming here. Does anybody know how to activate the, this, this is an audio recording underneath this, this guy's talking, but I don't see how it could work here. For the sake of time, let me explain what he's saying here. He's testifying before the Power Planning Council, who is basically the oversight of vulnerable power administration. And what he's saying is that, he's talking about their financial situation, and he basically saying, on one hand, we can be cavalier about this, on the other hand, we can panic. He said, I'm not at a panic stage, but in a very, very sense of. He said, "I'm not in a panic stage, but in a very, very sense of urgency to do something about this now." So here we have a CEO of a major utility basically saying he's this close to panicking. Now, if you were an investor in this, you'd probably be a little excited about what he had to say, and a lot of people are. So let me get to what he's talking about. This is one of their charts from one of their latest strategic plans done a couple of years ago, and this is the problem. And what you're looking at here is the green line is the cost of power that Viable Power produces in megawatt hours, and you can see in the 2019 timeframe, it's up around $36 a megawatt hour. And basically, this is also their cost of production, because they're nonprofits, so their costs have got to be pretty, just under their revenue stream. And you can see that it's been going up pretty steadily since 2012. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Notably, the price of, well, let's put it this way, the California market shifted about eight, nine years ago, and what has happened is that we were selling surplus power, Viable was, to California, making a lot of money at it, but California's added so much wind, and especially solar now, 9,000 megawatts in the last six years, that basically the demand has dropped from California. And so to make up for those losses, Viable's been raising the rates. You also have the traditional problem of aging infrastructure. These dams are all old, these hydro plants are, their turbines are wearing out and so forth. And this isn't like the heyday of dam building, when you could go order a turbine and get it two years later, or a year later. Three turbines on one dam on the Lower Snake River have spent 20 years in design and construction, and there's still one turbine laying on the floor. That's how hard it is to maintain this stuff. The blue lines, let me focus your attention on the dotted line, which is an average of the solid blue line, but that's basically what you call the open market prices. Midsea is a trading hub for power in the state, and these prices have been going down. And of course, what's driving this, these downward pressure on prices, is less demand because of conservation all over the place, and more solar, especially in California, is driving down the cost of wholesale rates. And so you can see the business dilemma that Viable is in right here, is that their costs are rising, and their competition is basically, the open market prices are dropping. And so industries that have direct contracts with BPA for power are basically walking away and going to the wholesale market. So that's what's happening in terms of this business model. I also, you noted the little red arrow at the bottom where it says minus 22 at California Intertight. This is negative pricing going on. In the springtime, it's quite often the case that we're actually, Viable is paying customers or paying California utilities to take the surplus power. Now, this is creating a significant financial loss, and in the same testimony, Mr. Meiser pointed out that Viable has shed $900 million of cash in the last eight, 10 years, most of it in the last six years, for these reasons noted here. So that's the business model problem. That upper red arrow is just an indication of what we think the Lower Snake River dams cost it out. It's not easy number to come up with, but basically, we know it's well over $40 a megawatt hour. So even at the 36th, the average, the Lower Snake River dams are even much more. That's why they've been an issue for many years now. Okay, so the next thing is, I want to just point out some of the financial issues of BPA. Most, virtually everything on this chart, unless I caveat it somehow, is from their own information, is from their IPRs, from their budgets and stuff like this. But they're $15 billion in debt, and by comparison, you know, whoops, which is the Washington Power Production Agency that was in charge of dealing with the nuclear power plants in the state, that bond default was 2.25 billion. We're sitting on $15 billion worth of debt with Viable right now. Most of that debt is in bonds with Energy Northwest, and there's about $5 billion in debt with the U.S. Treasury. The debt service is about 1.56 billion last year, and that's 40% of their revenue. That's a very high number for debt servicing. And most of that debt service, 90-something, 95% of it, is actually just their interest payments, which they often borrow money to make interest payments. So that's, they're using one credit card to basically pay for another. That's my wording, not theirs, by the way. They would take exception to that. The cash reserves were nearly zero, he, Mr. Meiser was pointing that out in that testimony. But through the accounting error they found, it's been going on since 2003, I'm sure you've heard about this, they have decided to shift from the transmission side of their responsible reserves, 180 million. And this basically took care of the immediate crisis they were having with no cash on the power side. And the power side basically is, you know, paying the Corps of Engineers and Bureau of Reclamation to produce that power, and then sell it to us, and of course, you know, charge us. So that's a temporary fix, and I asked Mr. Meiser the other day how long he thought that was last, and he didn't really answer me, other than saying, "Our trend is looking good," whatever that means. All right, so one of the bonding agencies, Moody's, didn't buy all this movement, accounting movements here, and basically gave them a negative outlook, because they did not see anything in their strategic plan, nor in their actions that were actually, looked like they were going to be able to reduce costs significantly. They're doing a lot of little things, but nothing's going to add up to the billions that they're in debt here. In July, you may have heard that BPA with great fanfare announced a zero rate increase, when in fact, it actually was a range that they soon discovered, and some of us, it went from minus 3% to a 10% increase. I think your rate was pretty close to 6% increase from this, the PUDs was about 3.5%. This is sort of a transparency issue. There's a calculus they're using here to come up with zero that may work out, but it's not really fair to the ratepayers and to the PUDs and cities to basically announce to the world that you've got a 0% rate increase, because then that keeps the politicians off their back, and that's what they're trying to do. An example of expenses is $1 billion spent on bypass improvements in the Lower Snake Dams was now known, was a known waste at the time, it was put in place in 2000, but it was spent anyway, and so ratepayers will end up stuck with that bill too. And that's a decision we didn't have a voice in, or actually, we did, and we said, "Don't do it," but that was ignored through the public process 20 years ago. It's also important to realize that 12% of BPA's revenues come from surplus sales. However, it's 20% to 40% of their power production is, goes into, is a surplus sale, so you see there's an imbalance there. So once again, these are just some indicators, some financial indicators of what's going on. We also are constantly hit with stories about how important the dams are, and one of them is, I note here, is this issue about a cold snap last March, in which they claimed that without the Lower Snake Dams, there would have been superior power averages in the state of Washington. And this has been repeated over and over again. In fact, it came out again today from a PUD down the road. But the fact is, for the entire month of March, looking at generation data off the dams, which is all public information, we noticed that BPA surplus sales only fell below a bench, basically the production of the Lower Snake Dams for one hour. So that means that for the rest of the month, the Lower Snake Dams were generating power that was totally surplus and going to California or someplace. And so basically, it's 100 megawatts of power that theoretically was used. However, BPA was still sending surplus power to California while that was going on, and telling us there was an energy issue. In other words, cut off your lights. And to say power, but they were shifting it to California. They're making money. You can't argue that maybe that's a good business decision, but then to use that as an excuse to hold on to a piece of infrastructure that's losing money is misleading. So, and of course, the other thing they could have done is just gone to that open market that I showed, and bought that power for about $5,800. In the meantime, the LSRDs were costing $23, $23,000 an hour to operate, so you can see that's, you know, does that look like a critical asset, but it's important for us. So for the sake of time, and I just showed this chart, just to note that there is real data here, there's the actual number, and where you see the red line on the right dipped just barely below that blue line, which is the Lower Snake production, and the red line is surplus sales going to California. You see that little dip, that's that one point in one month. And this has only happened a few times over the last 10 years, that it has actually been this sort of dip where you actually need the Lower Snake Dams. So from a power production standpoint, they're pretty, well, frankly, useless. So, and also for people out here on the North Olympic Peninsula, these dams are causing lost fisheries, lost whale watching, lost Pacific Northwest ecosystem. All of these are economic issues that we all be aware of. I would suggest that you, if you want to learn about that, look at this video that I've left you guys about the dams extension, which talks about all this stuff. And I also note that in eastern Washington, they are foregoing about 3,000 agricultural and recreation jobs in the Lower Snake Valley because of the dams. And so anyway, I'll stop there, and if you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Well, analyzing whoops was really interesting, because it makes me wonder how this is going to end. And, you know, do we stay on that train and continue to be a customer, or do we look for other options? What do we do is look at governments knowing that this supplier of our power is not physically sound?
Well, there's basically two things we need to be looking at. One is, we have to quit relying on what BPA and the folks that support them, associations and so forth, are telling us. They're often addressing issues with platitudes. Oh, we need it for peak power. Well, I just showed you that peak power is almost nonexistent on the Lower Snake Dams because of the nature of those dams. The other thing is, we approach, you know, contracts for, you know, where we buy our power in the future. Those negotiations are starting now, and I think it's important that we do look at the open market, we do look at renewable resources, especially solar, because that's one huge way to hedge your rate increases with Viable, is the more solar you got, the more basically you lock in your rate of whatever you pay for that solar. And since solar prices are dropping so much, that's an important option to be looking at. And I should also point out that, just as an example of how big that potential is, there's 3,000 megawatts of solar with battery, with some of it with battery backup, waiting to be integrated into Viable Power's grid. However, there's not enough space in the grid because of all the hydropower. And so it's just sitting there with, you know, power production companies waiting to install 3,000 megawatts of solar, and it's slowly trickling, and it ought to be just coming at gangbusters. Other questions?
So this, you know, you're talking about the dams, and your background of the Corps of Engineers, I don't know if it's like a college Cadillac desert, I don't know if you're familiar with it.
Oh, very.
Yeah, but it's really interesting, but Mark Raisler talks about the history of how a lot of these dams were installed, and I think one thing a lot of people don't realize is, there wasn't always a long-term strategy with which dams were built, where and why. And so, you know, one of the points here, I think, making is that we're really over-producing on some level. And, you know, it's easy for us to look at, oh, we have these dams that do this, provide this much power. Sometimes those dams are put there because the Corps of Engineers decided with Bureau of Reclamation, they wanted a dam there first or whatever. And I might not have played with the history of these specific dams, but it's just a really interesting history that we don't always, we didn't always have a strategic goal when we put a dam in a specific place. Sometimes it was just we wanted to build a dam. And so that's a history that I think a lot of people, it's a great look for removing Cadillac deserts to people, I guess.
Well, that's very true. In fact, the Corps of Engineers refused to build Lower Snake Dams for 20 or 30 years because of bad economics, but in 1947, through political pressure, they, and you can read this right in their report, they basically falsified the economics, justified the dams. And that's how they got authorized, and slowly got built through appropriations. So, yeah, and it's been over-production ever since. And the only thing that was working was, we were selling surplus power profit until eight years ago. And that's just vaporized, and that market is not going to come back.
I appreciate the presentation, and I feel like, from my position, there are two issues that you raised. One is our ongoing reliance as a city on Viable Power. And then the other issue is the political, must become a political issue, of removing the Lower Snake River Dams for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is salmon habitat. And so I just appreciate giving a little more detail, I did watch the DVD. And I think there's also some potential political pressure that as a legislative body, we could put on, oh, I don't know, maybe the governor or some other folks to move forward with removing them at some point. So I see that as two, I see that as two separate issues, but I appreciate more information from you tonight about the whole, the picture.
Yeah, one point you made, though, you mentioned the legislature doing something with the governor. It's important to realize he's a federal dam, the state legislature has no role whatsoever, so what he did with them is just pointless. The second one, the U.S. legislature, they do not need to authorize anything to reach these dams. That is already embedded in the Corps' authorities to not off a project if it's not economically viable. They can do that tomorrow afternoon if they want to. The deal is, is the Corps doesn't do anything without some politician popping them in the head, you know, a better phone caller, you know, come to a meeting.
Well, I thoroughly appreciate you kind of thanking me, because this was something that we have discussed, you know, where does the future of the electricity happen for the city and for this region? And I know that our, you know, our contract is coming up in 2028, and so it's one of those things that we need to take a look and see how to grow, so we can become independent and this potentially for how we work our way to being efficient. So, thank you very much for the presentation. Really appreciate you being here. And that DVD is hopefully continuing to circle for staff, so we really appreciate you having my back, Chris.
All right, good.
Thank you. Right into the presentation. So, let me read the consent agenda. City first, actually, with the heating, I was going to... City outstanding is September 3, September 17, 2019, expenditure report from September 7, 2019, and September 20, 2019. Stone Garden grant acceptance, Stormwater Education and Outreach Services, Intermodal Regular, Volkswagen County, and the Lodging Text Advisory Committee Equipment.
I'm looking at the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Second. Okay, any comments? Seeing no comments. We've got a motion to table, I'll vote in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any votes? Yes, and... All right, now, we're at that, done.
The fact that we have one, why we have one, what comes into it, just basically a reminder. Basically, the continuity of operations planning, COOP, is a plan that addresses how the city, basically the city government, will operate and be able to continue to operate if something bad happens. And so it's designed to basically deal with an all-hazards approach. It could be fire, flood, earthquake, power outage, anything that can potentially happen. It doesn't necessarily have to be something really horrible, it could be something fairly minor. For instance, just recently, there was a very small fire in a motor in HVAC unit here in City Hall. Very small fire, but it produced a smell and odor which was particularly bad, and because of that, the city manager wasn't able to use his office, the city clerk wasn't able to use her, or else they had to move. And so the COOP plan addresses things like that. So if in fact, finance couldn't occupy their office, where would they move to? What would they do? What are the things they need to have in place that would enable that to happen? That's what the COOP plan does. So in a much broader sense, the plan identifies who are the key personnel in the city. Everybody likes to think that they're key, certainly nobody wants to think that they aren't, but the reality is, is that there are people who are more key. And so this identifies the people who have to be available either 24/7, or there has to be an immediate response by certain people at certain times. It identifies alternative locations where, if in fact, like, we weren't able to occupy this building, where would we move? If the senior center couldn't occupy this building, where would they move? If the police department hadn't been able to, they'd go, et cetera. And then specifically, it talks to essential mission functions. One of the things that absolutely have to be done. So essential mission functions. Provide vital services, exercising sole authority, maintaining the safety of the public, and maintaining the industrial and economic base of the city. maintain the industrial and economic base of the city. All of these things are things that have to occur. They have to continue. It's the reason why the city exists is in order to do these things. And because that's the reason why the city exists, we need to have a plan to enable those cities to continue when something goes wrong. A lot of these things are directed by statute. State law, federal law says you have to do certain things. Some people have to be incarcerated, some people. I mean, there's different things that have to happen. Statute says we need to do them, we need to do that. And there are certain things that have to happen with minimal interruption. So you can think about, for instance, the function, even though it's not something that the city itself provides, but the function of the jail. The jail has to continue to happen. You can't just say, oh, well, there's a storm, we're going to let everybody go. You just can't do that. You can't just say, well, there's a storm, we're not going to respond to 911 calls anymore. Oh, there's a storm, we're not going to continue to treat sewage. There are certain things that need to go either without interruption or with minimal interruption. There are some things that have to happen immediately, no matter what the emergency is. Fire protection, police protection, the provision of power, provision of water, making sure that things go away when we flush the toilet. Those things have to continue. And there are a number of other ones that have to be not just immediate, but they have to be back within 12 hours. So you can imagine that there are certain functions, even though they may not need to be resumed within immediately, like you've got to answer 911, but there are things that are within 12 hours. So again, you can think of the fact that if there's a bridge that's out, within 12 hours, somebody needs to go out there and make sure that it's cordoned off, so it doesn't go wrong. There are just certain events, certain things that are addressed within this plan that have a 12-hour window. And the plan is designed to enable the city to function for 30 days without outside help. So for instance, finance, let's say finance needs to be able to pay the bills. They have to have the ability, even without IT support, to be able to pay the bills for 30 days, which means somewhere in a drawer or a cabinet, there has to be, there have to be paper checks that can actually be filled out by hand and provided. There has to be the ability to continue to function without calling for outside help for 30 days. And that's what this plan does. That plan does exist. So as an example, for finance, within 12, within the first 12 hours, definitely within 24 hours, they have to say the representative to the emergency operations center. There has to be someone from finance in the emergency operations center that's going to help with the collection of bills, with payment of bills, with the payment of everything financial, record keeping, time keeping, et cetera. They have to make sure that they have the ability to provide liquid funds for the immediate purchase of things that are necessary. Because there are in an emergency, there are going to be people who are going to say, well, they will not be able to take electronic payment, they're going to need liquid fund payments. That's one of the finance responsibilities. People need to be paid, process of time cards has to continue no matter what. So you'd think it's sort of mundane, but in an emergency, people, time needs to be tracked, they need to be compensated for the work they do. That's another one of the finance responsibilities. And like I said, they have to process those critical payments. So if you looked at a COOP plan in finance for the tier one immediate stuff, this is an example of what they need to do. US Council also have tier one immediate responsibilities that you're supposed to be able to do. Someone from the council, theoretically, within the first 12 hours, definitely no less than 24 hours, needs to report to the EOC so that you can maintain the seat of government, so that you can facilitate those policy actions that need to be done. The declaration of disaster, things like that, that only council members, only elected officials can do. You are going to be the ones who are going to be potentially allocating the funding or approving the funding allocation that needs to occur. And you're also going to be the ones who are going to be providing liaison with other jurisdictions, with other government entities, with the state, potentially with the feds. So those are all the things that you're going to be doing, plus you're the face of the city. So in the event that something goes wrong, if there's a big disaster, the council is going to be looking to, the city, the community is going to be looking to the council to be the face of the city, to stand in front of the camera and to let everybody know what's going on, the fact that things are under control, or not, or at least what we're doing in order to maintain control. So the COOP plan exists. Every department has a section within the plan. Every department has specific guidance for what they're supposed to do for the first 12 hours, first 24 hours, first 30 days. I just wanted, the whole intent of this was just to remind you that that plan does exist, that it will be updated frequently, and that you have the role within it. And then finally, I would not be doing my due diligence if I didn't have the fact that basically we all kind of assume that everything's going to go okay. Sometimes we sit in our own little protective box and we assume it's going to be okay, but sometimes stuff happens. And when stuff like that happens, that's why you do the COOP plan. Okay, so thanks. That's all we got. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate the reminder.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't reviewed it, so I apologize. Maybe this is in there, but when we have the ongoing earthquake, we need to have pre-approved that emergency because it's going to get these council members to show up at the EOC, whether it's a fire station or something, a tent set by the airport, or whatever it is. You know, you said, these are things that can never take longer or can never happen. It's like, I think we need to be realistic in this very, you have that emergency and knowing the resources we have, we need to begin to prepare the whole community to respond appropriately for that emergency. And yeah, that might not happen to her lifetimes, but that process of community preparedness, I think, will have beneficial effects for smaller emergencies like stormy weather, the central windstorm, other things. And the community building process, how do we respond effectively and care of each other is going to be valuable in some other ways. So I just want to make sure we're realistic about the severity of some of the situations that would be really, really, really bad.
All right. And I do believe that when you shared it with us in the past, it's like a whole set of books for every.
Then we have a comprehensive emergency plan for the city. It is a whole set of books and it basically goes through step by step by step. Everything that every department, every member or every employee of the city is required to do, everything that every department and every employee of the city has a, has a role and is outlined within that plan. And it's there.
And that is also on the web for us to be able to find, right?
Pardon me?
Are the files available to, I guess, for everybody to review? Are those on the server so that we can find them?
If you wanted to see it or have access to it. Okay, absolutely, just come and let me know, talk to me anytime.
Okay, because I know that you have a printed version. I just wondered whether it was digital version.
So what would end up happening, just so you would get the idea of the process and the way it would work, just like what you're saying. So let's say something happens. You know, everybody's going to know that something happened, where that thing is, the emergency operations center is going to be set up. Your role would be to go to the emergency operations center. All of those logins and all that information will be there and you'll have access to it. And basically, since every, like we just said with finance, every department's going to be sending a representative there, every department will have that information available to them there. And we'll just go through the cycle of planning and it's the procedure's set up, we train on it. All of the department heads, all of the primary employees within the city have specific incident command training that they're required to get. They all know what that is and it's something that's being updated and applied all the time.
Any other questions?
I asked me as the council to train on it. I mean, when the city manager's office is vacuering, I have checked my email in a few days and I was looking for a quiet spot to work. So I, I'll lock the door, I can go over there and hide out a little hidden council meeting room. Unbeknownst to me that, you know, I should not be in there because there's no sign telling me not to. So I did not open the book and read my proper policies. And, you know, if there's expectations that us as council members in these emergencies, I think we need to be better prepared, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Lodging tax. Let's take a look at lodging tax. So Nate, would you mind us start this one?
Uh, we're going to have a direct record review service.
My name is Mayor, members of the council. In front of you tonight is the recommendations coming from our lodging tax advisory committee. Specifically, the committee met on September 18th and discussed several items relating to their priorities and goals, allocation of the city's fund for 2020, the review criteria for the 2020 lodging tax fund and event applications, and the term length of the committee members. And so the staff's recommendations in front of you tonight are really reflective of the motions made during that meeting. The first motion made by the committee was specific to reliving their guided policy. That is section two of the guided policy set forth in the council resolution of number 11-18. Essentially, the change in front of you is removing the specific dates and using the term non-demand period. The committee's intent there was really to provide some flexibility, recognizing that the non-demand or non-peak period might fluctuate every year. So they wanted to instead not specify a specific month range, but just use that term. So that's the first recommendation in front of you. The next recommendation speaking specifically about the budget allocation, as summarized in your packet, the estimated revenue that we're expecting to receive from lodging tax in 2020 is $707,800. And the committee's recommended allocation will have 30% go toward capital. And that's capital expenditures of tourism-related facilities owned or operated by the municipal county. And then 5% toward committee priorities and then I will come back to that point. 20% toward marketing to support tourism, 33% toward operations, and this is operations of tourism-related facilities owned or operated by the city or a nonprofit organization. And then lastly, 12% toward events. And there are actual dollar amounts that are in your packet for each of those. Going back to the committee priorities, so the committee's in the process of finalizing a goals and policy document, they will, they had a great discussion on those policies at their last meeting and they hope to finalize that effort in, at their next scheduled meeting. The third and fourth motion spoke to criteria that is used in our applications for our fund for non-event and event applications. Those are detailed in your packet and I'm happy to further elaborate any of those. Essentially, the criteria layout, there will be a point system that will be used for scoring of received applications. The final motion spoke to directing staff to bring forth an ordinance to you for consideration, specifically amending chapter 2.70 of the Fort Angeles Municipal Code relating to lodging tax committee, specifically to the term length of members. What staff actually, there's a correction to the memo, we're going to add a recommendation actually to conduct the first reading, and I apologize for that. Staff was able to create the actual ordinance that does propose a two-year term versus one year. And so in conclusion, there are five recommendations in front of council tonight. The fifth one that we're proposing to add is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance, amending chapter 2.70 of the Fort Angeles Municipal Code relating to lodging tax committee.
Counsel, just one element of supplemental information you have placed under your dais. Counsel member Rand, it's an email that's going to be placed under your dais, his email was relative to two of those recommendations, as per the, if I direct correct.
And counsel, I guess before we begin discussing, I wanted to address the non-peak because it's not talked about. And the non-peak came about because I guess Donna really had the list of when she was comfortable at the red line and when she was not. And the months that used to be shoulder months or not didn't work. She goes, there were some times in the middle of summer that were empty. And so it was, that's the reason where it came to peak and non-peak or, or non, yes. And so what the committee thought was what they wanted for this year. And it was January through May, with exception for Martin Luther King Day and President's Weekend due to the AAU festival terms. June, the first two weeks of June, with exception for the first weekend for the North Olympic Discover Marathon. July, any Sunday through Thursday. August, all Sundays. September, any date outside of Labor Day weekend. October, any date outside of the Grand Festival, and all the month of November, December.
That was her regulation of, of certain of when it was non-peak, right?
Yes. So, and so that's the reason for not doing just saying shoulder season or winter season. So this would be published with the application so people could bill those dates.
I mean, I feel like, go ahead.
Well, that is so specific that we're going to continue the lodging tax and continue to fund all of the events that we're exempting. That's the way I potentially would make that.
Yeah, it's one of the reasoning on some level. That it's like, hey, we have these events that fill up hotels, therefore the times we don't have these events to fill up hotels, we need to have events that fill up hotels.
So, so the idea was that that's, if events were happening, we wouldn't, so they wanted to encourage new events and they also didn't want to discourage events when the hotels were empty.
Well, when one hotel is empty.
Well, when one hotel is empty.
I think that's an important clarification.
Yeah, and I have a lot of respect for Donna. I think she's actually really smart and I have conversations with her where she is really tied into a lot of these things on a very detailed level that sometimes we that are not in the industry, don't understand how complex it is to fill a hotel and all the work that goes into that. At the same time, I just, I think that I don't agree with that policy recommendation. And I think that there still isn't enough flexibility, you know, in how these are going to be scored subjectively by the committee members, that they can achieve the goals while still having a policy that, you know, prioritizes a calendar date kind of form.
Yeah, because it does just say there's a priority.
Yeah.
The original number two doesn't mean they can't, with their, with the scoring options they given, I mean, it's 20 points, but it is as my point and I was suggesting.
And I also don't want to make a sharp policy change just because of one year. You know, one of the things I pointed out in my last council report was our visitor counts are down, and that's why in both our visitor center and town, physical visitor counts, people walking in their door, and in Spud, and in Forks, and Jackson County, visitor counts are down compared to last year and before, which were record-setting years. So yes, there's been a correction in which we can't, compared to last year, we're down. That's the way my personal business has been most of the summer. August will, you know, we were even or up a tiny bit, but in July, we were down. That's compared to one of the biggest years that the industry has ever had in our region. I don't want to overcorrect the policy because of one year where we didn't necessarily have a match with where we were trying to market. Does that make sense?
It does. And I think what the committee was trying to do is try to know that that flexibility can happen during the year because it's just non-demand. That's, you know, the non-demand, and that's, you know, that's the only thing.
Yeah, so my, that's, my only problem is I, this is a tricky thing where we're setting policy for our advisory committee and we want to set policy that's flexible enough that they can use it to make, to have good outcomes, but not flexible enough so that if the commit, the makeup of that can maybe change to people that weren't as tied into the industry, they would start making, getting bad outcomes because the, they would stray too far from the policy direction, right? So it's a tricky thing to set that boundary. So, it's a tricky thing to set that boundary, but we want some amount of flexibility, I agree. But we don't want so much that, you know, we go back to the previous system in which we were funding too many events in July and August.
Well, didn't we put this policy in place last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, did it use once?
August twenty-first, twenty-eighth.
All right, has it even been used at all?
I believe it would have been used for one grant cycle at this point.
I agree with the Council on the right, just to refer to visitors. There's already now, we've already admitted, using the words made up for it here in May, the language held during non-demand periods is just waffle words. And there's a reason why we have this policy. We should get more data and test it a little more cycle.
Any other questions?
Not on that, but I do have a question. Should we deal with that?
Should we deal with that issue first independently, or do we need to?
I think the other issue, well.
Well, I have a question about the review criteria. For each of the events, what it clearly is communicating is that new events get more points. It's on iTunes. But it's unclear, so one year equals five points, one in two years equals four points. So, that one and one is a little confusing to me. I just want to understand exactly what that, or loosely what that means. And then, I don't understand the five points in parentheses. And I just want to understand what, what that means.
And, great.
So, the five points in parentheses is just the maximum that you can get for that, if you ever raise your hand. And then, I know I had a question or two. I believe the intent was, so a brand-new event that has never happened.
So, first year.
First year, correct. We either restart here.
Okay, thank you.
And second year, four points, third year, three points, second year.
Yes, I, I like that. I like the, and I think that reflects some of the conversation we've had as a council about event expenditures. As long as I have my mic here going on. I just also want to clarify that we, and I apologize if this is written somewhere and I missed it, but the capital, the thirty percent, your capital meets the thirty percent as we stated it, but doesn't acknowledge that if there isn't a full amount, that that money gets set aside. That doesn't go away, does it?
It is not, that's what we have.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that wasn't clear on that.
So, I move that we approve the fund, non-event and event, to review criteria for the 2020 lodging tax applications cycle as proposed.
Second. Okay.
I have a clarification. Why are we approving this? I mean, do we need to set this level of, of criteria for the advisory committee? And is this something that we told them to do it one way and not going to do it another way? Are we establishing something that, you know, they're asking us to tell them this is exactly how you as a council, yeah, the council just tell them how to do it work, but do we really need to honor this? I guess that's my question.
I think the intent was just the committee in a way with this, with this recommendation is just they're advising their council. I guess it was the council's decision if you feel like there's no need really to recognize that with the motion of official approval.
And I also want to clarify that, you know, because the applications are going out, felt like it was important to let applicants know what they're going to be creating or how they were going to be scored. And so, bringing it up to council and saying, do you guys agree with what we're kind of saying? This is what the committee felt and something that the application has to be modified to show this. Because before, it was basically scoring on, you know, whether you're bringing people from fifty miles out. So, it was that state requirement. This actually gets more to me, we're actually doing some of the priorities that we said we wanted to do. And so, there was the change in that. And so, we felt that, so that we felt like, okay, you know, we've got, we have a different way of scoring, letting you guys know that. You guys agree with that?
Thank you for that clarification. And counsel, you, Madam Mayor, had read that as far as this is, that's, that's the prominent issue. This is a substantial change from the scoring that was done previously. And it's brand-new scoring and it was important that council see.
So, in that case, should we add to the guided policy so that the L-TAC has their, their rules and guidelines?
Maybe eventually.
And hopefully, that's the, at the end, these would be there. So, like I said, I know that staff really needed to have the scoring criteria immediately so that they didn't send out the applications and people would know. And so, it, it could wait until we give all of the, you know, that guided principles all put together or it could be done now. I don't think it matters.
Well, I suggest we wait a year and see how, if we feel like these are good criteria, we can have them all season officially in stone at a later date. You know, keep the trial run this year. I think that, like, there, I haven't had any problem with them, with that criteria, so. And I do appreciate that we did have a very different way of doing it before that didn't have things like achieving the L-TAC priorities.
Okay.
Because they didn't have that.
Right. But we do have a motion on the table in the second. So, as to, could you read the motion again, please?
To, to approve the fund, non-event and event, to review criteria so that both sections for the 2020 lodging tax applications cycle is proposed.
Okay. So, how do you run it forward? Do you want to just?
Unless it's for the discussion, we go to motion. Unless it's for the discussion, we go to motion.
Okay. All right, folks, so any for the discussion, folks? All of those who favor the motion, they say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes the unanimous vote. All right. Do we need to review these ordinances here?
So, I, I had a question before we get to the ordinance, which is the, the lodging tax advisory committee directed staff to prepare an ordinance? And how'd that work? Because it's an advisory committee.
Sorry, that, that's not correct. So, I, I believe the, we had a communication issue that's, that certainly I own relative to what we're moving forward with. And I think that our intent was to actually go ahead and get direction from council to draft the ordinance. And it was mentioned to the committee that ultimately, it would be an ordinance change in order to change the terms, and that was the ultimate intent. What came out in the memo is simply direct staff to do it. Simultaneously, we had the legal department begin drafting it, anticipating, and also recommending to staff that changing that term was a good thing because to reconsider those positions annually is very challenging. And we'd certainly love to see longer terms implemented. So, we simultaneously moved forward with both, but know that if it reads that way, I apologize. But I think the intent is simply to get, to get the first reading done this evening of the draft ordinance that was placed in front of you that extends the term to two years, recognizing that we have heard from one other council member in writing that perhaps it should be longer than two years.
I moved it off the orders of the City of Angeles, I'll share a minute, chapter two point seven oh of the Angeles Municipal Code relating to the lodging tax committee. While I was considering today, it will basically changes the terms of the office of the city L-TAC one year to two years.
So, I'll say that you had a first reading, second reading. You know, this is the first reading. We continue your connecting. So, I think that was our intent.
Oh, well, then I rescind that ordinance.
Okay, that was it.
Okay. Thanks, sorry.
So, I will open the, well, I guess, so this will be the first reading. That was the first reading and not the ordinance. And we will have a second reading on October fourteenth.
And I will support this motion in my opinion, because I, this ordinance is exciting. Would that make total sense after your term?
So, I actually wanted to suggest that perhaps we think about something a little bit different, which is if staff who works with this committee and, and other council members in the Adcom committee think it would be useful to do staggered terms so that you don't end up with all new people and everyone's starting over, but that you maintain some, some continuity and some history about how, like, when someone sits down and says, why don't we do it that way? Well, let me tell you why. That it's not always this reorientation every, even every two years. But there might be, if there are other committees or commissions that have a state, have state of terms that we could just pull from, I think that might be worth considering.
That's a good idea.
If, if there's a reason to think that this is a, a committee that would maintain people for more than two years.
I think it hasn't passed. I mean, there were a lot of nominees, there's a point for six thousand terms, but I don't think they're having to have them.
So, I personally think this is a good idea because it's a total waste of time to have to reapply everybody every year. Having been on the Adcom committee for these appointments, I have a few other thoughts about it as well. And if I could suggest these are things to consider in the second reading and have adoption. So, yeah, two years or even three years, as council members might suggest, would be fine with the staggered start. So, it might take a little while to roll that in. But we have different classes of members within this committee. And in, within each of those classes, we can stagger and have, you know, one new person in each of those classes start every year. I agree that members may be permitted four successive terms, but I'd like to see a term limit set to that. That was one of the things that we looked at as the Adcom committee, of how long each of these, these members served on the L-TAC. Both, and, and we did consider, well, you know, this person's had their view as part of this committee for a long time. But there's no formal term limits to it. I think there's value to saying something like, you know, eight, eight years max and then, you know, four years off or something like that. Appointments, and then, we've had a challenge in the last couple months with the non-voting members who are at-large, where we just picked one today in our consent agenda. But our rule requires that the at-large members not be potential recipients of L-TAC funds and also not be contributors to the L-TAC fund. And we had a number of applicants come in who were ineligible due to that restriction. So, another suggestion I'd like to see in this would be to have the non, the at-large members, which by the way are non-voting, so these are like non-voting members, I'm not sure how that actually works, but that, you know, they are selected first from the pool of candidates who are not lodging tax, just civilians for lodging tax beneficiaries. But if that pool of candidates is not sufficiently large to supply all of the positions, then we could choose from the candidates who are also recipients. So, there's a lot of people who are, you know, are utilizers, who want to be on L-TAC, but we don't have a lot of at-large members. That's a way for us to say, okay, well, we're filling the voting numbers, but we have all these other people and we don't have just these citizen at-large who's not involved in L-TAC funding or, or, or support to be able to do that. So, those are all changes that I, I'd like to see. But at minimum, I'm very happy with the ordinance as is, just reduce the administrative term of our overhead from every year to every year.
And I would agree that I definitely want the stepford. And I do like the idea of having term limits on it. And, and then we find whether, you know, we fill it, we try to fill those non, the at-large positions and then if not, go with others. Because it is really great to get the voices in there. And the more voices, I think, the better the decision is. And so, whether it doesn't, whether the at-large end up being, you know, someone who gets lodging tax or doesn't, I think, like I said, ideally, it'd be great if they weren't, but then receiving or giving. But if they're not there, I would agree that I'm happy to take anybody.
There's statute or a reason that that terminology exists.
If there is, please don't suggest that to us. But, yeah, it's, it's just the United Municipal Code, so there might be statute behind it. One other suggestion, and this is something I mentioned at the beginning, was considering a member of our L-TAC who is, I mean, a member of the council's L-TAC.
So, counsel, at this point, we've heard from two council members that are supportive of staggered terms, term limits, and, and exploration of at-large positions. If it's not state statute, it adds additional flexibility there. If we have two additional council members that have similar desires, we can move forward to re-draft the ordinance for the second reading.
I'm good with all of it. I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of the at-large being from the other group, but they don't have voting power anyway, so it's not, it's no different, I suppose, than somebody going there and doing a comment about it, so. I'm okay with it. I just think variety on it. But staggered term limits and two-years, this definitely would be nice because it seems like those things come through on a constant basis.
Additional term limits?
Yeah, but what's the term limit going to be defined in?
Well, I think the first one was mentioned about, you know, eight years and then you have to take four years off. Just, that's just a beginning.
I guess I'm wrong with the eight-year term limit. I was gonna suggest that I'll make a term limit just because sometimes I don't, I don't want to make it too hard to fill seats. You know, there aren't that many general areas of hotels in the city limits.
And, Madam Mayor, just for an example, the Bronx Recreation and Beautification Commission is two four-year terms, one year off, and then you can reapply if you wanted to get that off.
Two four-year terms, one term off, okay.
One year off.
Or one year off.
So, eight years, I would be fine with eight years, two years off, same, since it's a two-year, two-year term.
Okay, eight years terms, two years off.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd go with it.
If we're gonna do that, then it makes sense to keep it two years and not three years. Because that gets a little tricky. It's an interesting math.
And was I one of the people you needed to hear from?
I don't know.
I'm fine with stagger.
So, counsel, we'll, we'll make a rec, on the, on the staggering, or sorry, on the term limit approach, we'll probably make a recommendation that's consistent with the remainder of code. And, but the rest of it, we will make sure that we've got two-year terms incorporated as well as a stagger approach for the different represented seats. We do, definitely will check state statute, and it does provide guidelines and not requirements for many of the individuals on the committee. We want to double-check those before we modify the at-large situation.
And I would say that the at-large, I'd find with a restriction on, with the first restriction, which was if you apply for grants. Just to be clear, you know, if you appoint someone, then we apply for that grant to that position, they reduce themselves, and how would the entire purpose? But I think the other restriction doesn't make much sense.
The people who contribute to it.
Yes, yes. That's, I don't know, I don't agree with that.
The only other thing I would throw, if it's easy, would be if there is another, I think, someone mentioned planning commission, if there's another model that could easily drop in in terms of term lengths and staggering, so you don't have to create something totally different for this that, that is another calendar to track. I'd be interested in seeing that in addition to the two-year option.
If staff, if staff wanted to recommend that?
Yes.
Yes. I think there's still something hanging from the recommendations. So, the county committee recommended budget, is that the one?
The percentage, but there's also this resolution of the City Council, the City of Angeles, relating the lodging tax advisory committee guided policies. And that's the one that.
I think we've chosen not to take that out.
Well, that's the one that's gonna be added into the party. Yeah, that's, that's the one that's going to be added into the memo. Do they, does, so the budgetary allocations, does that need to be passed by council or does that?
Because that's actually the most important action this evening, maybe we'll have to move forward with those grant application, uh, RFPs.
Okay, so that's the one that is...
I move that we, I move that we approve the committee's recommended, the logic tax committee's recommended allocation as described in the memo on HI-1 in the October 1st council memo.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, yes. So I do think that we are cutting it, I, you know, I'm someone who has spoken about in the past about over-studying on marketing and understanding on investment in the product. I think we're approaching the plan, which you're going to be hearing opposite from me, in that we've cut marketing in half from 2019 to 2020, and that concerns me. So I want to make sure there's still a lot of flexibility baked into this model so that if we do, you know, I think that one of our plans would be an RFP, since Vertigo Marketing is no longer operating as a team, um, an RFP for marketing services. And if that comes back saying, here's what we can do for this amount and it's larger than a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, I want to make sure that we don't miss out on opportunities.
Can, can I, some more in the background? Did you just say Vertigo was a ballot?
Still, yeah, Vertigo was basically two or three people. Um, they are no longer a firm, but we're still getting marketing services from those people currently.
So we're still getting the services that we're contracted for, but we, they will not, I don't think, carry that forward to next year if I, is that correct?
We would, we would not receive a response from Vertigo.
Right.
We perhaps might receive a response from each of their separate entities.
Correct. Okay.
But we'll, we'll be doing an RFP because of that.
Correct. And I guess one of the things I'd like to point to, folks, is that, um, we have reserves and so that they could potentially apply that way, but also if you look at the 2016 number for our meeting, it is still less for sure, um, for the 2020, but I mean, there was a huge jump in 17, 18, and 19, so.
Right.
So you could maybe consider this a correction as well from that.
Yeah, and I, I take that point. I think that's reasonable and that's, you know, because we saw a huge jump in the total tax collected in 2017, 2018, especially in the 2019, and now we're seeing this long correction down. Um, I just worry that we have at that point, because I think basically what happens, the LTAC priorities came direct, came out of marketing, which is fine. I think LTAC priorities should be fine. I think five percent is the minimum, right? And that's good, we have it there in the allocation by percentage.
And the other thing, because you should have capital on thirty and then extra capital for five more. And knowing that the priorities, the LTAC priorities were usually going to be more likely to capital, that's why. And then this one kind of focuses on all the priorities.
So what's the reason for that marketing?
It was actually, um, not, we were trying to make the events, um, marketing was, it kind of defaulted to that number. We had thirty percent for, according to our last council memo, we had thirty percent for capital and then five percent for capital to 15. So it was thirty-five percent for capital. And then we were trying to make the others work, so, um...
And we don't want, that's probably a little low, I would say. So I can see that it does get difficult when you get down to the numbers.
Yeah. And so we ended up, and then originally had the events at ten, and then we went up to twelve because I was, events have been really important to filling heads and beds. And then operations, um, you know, the numbers really were closer to thirty-five, but we're down to thirty-three, so we, so we kind of borrowed from those two because operations, you know, um, the numbers were so large and it's because, see how there's a reduction from the 2018 number? Um, and that is affected by, so some of the youth leagues and things like that that are actually filling a lot of the heads and beds, um, are, are paid out of operations. And so that was one of the things, trying to give up that operations for the youth leagues and things like that to be able to be, to have more, so.
And that, that number of real dollars has stayed really consistent throughout the 2016 to 2020 period.
Well, plus it's still...
It's less still.
See, and that's the part that we were hoping to, to increasing that. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so it, it didn't decrease only because of the way it was set up now, uh, we asked for X amount of dollars for the operational end, but there was also maintenance, uh, funds included in that, so I had to separate those two. We asked for the same dollar amount, that came out of two different kinds of lots of areas.
One of them is the capital.
Yeah.
So council, if I may, so just knowing our current contract with, with Vertigo, I would suspect that if the marketing number went down to that amount, you're going to see a reduction in the print ads. So, so that, that's really the costly amount. Um, also the, um, you know, I would suspect that the social media, uh, the website, you know, that could be really done easily with that amount of money. It's like the extra projects would be added on. For example, there was a project in the past where we had the vinyl wrap around the bus that the lefty's team, um, was driving around. Um, there's been some, um, special projects, you know, getting a publication in the mayor's, um, booklet that is given to fans. So I would suspect that you would just see, um, you know, a response from a group that would just really focus on the non-print, um, marketing services.
And, you know, taken on to that, I think the one area in which that would worry me is in, when, when we're trying to take a regional branch to marketing, OPTC does a lot of print media ads and they ask for partners to do discounted ads through them. And so we would be, I think, being less of a regional partner by cutting that. I'm not saying, I mean, I, I go back and forth on that because I also think sometimes, you know, I, I think the digital footprint is more important than the print, print media footprint. At the same time, our tourist demographic is not as digital as we often think they are. So that regional perspective of OPTC, I think, we would probably see, we would be just less of a partner for that and that, that does want to be a little bit.
And the other thing that was brought up is also that the state is now.
Yeah.
Having some funding there, so therefore it helps us not to have to fund as much. All right, so, um, we have a motion, right? So we've got a second on this. So any further discussion of the motion to approve the allocations? Um, okay, so all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Passes the Senate. Thank you. All right. So, uh, city manager evaluation.
Tonight I am bringing forward to you the city manager written evaluation process. Um, so per the implement agreement between the city council and city manager, West, a written evaluation, a twelve-month written evaluation is due for the date of September 2018 through September 2019. Um, and earlier this year in July, we approved a form to be used for the written evaluation. So tonight, I'm looking for direction on, um, direction from the council to allow me to distribute that form, um, so that we can begin that evaluation process. And then also looking for additional approval to authorize, um, again, me to work with a, a consultant who will come in and facilitate the review between the city council and the city manager. Um, and so with that, I think we're open for any discussion.
All right, council, any questions on it? And, um, I know that I said the thing with the consultant, that he's going to run the very first evaluation will be important and maybe that can help, so I totally support that.
Yeah, I like the idea of hiring someone to facilitate the process on the front end instead of deciding that the process didn't go well and hiring someone on the back end, yes, which I've been a party to before, and it's much nicer. Um, and I think, um, allows us to, to have a more thoughtful and, um, productive process.
So how would you like to move forward?
I would like the director of research and management to distribute the approved city manager performance evaluation form to the city council, which you can get the evaluation authorized staff to be working with a consultant to assist with the facilitation of the city manager written evaluation process.
Second, any further discussion?
And I would just say that I agree that for the first one especially, we probably want a consultant because this might be a process that directs professional development. And so I think that this is a, a good way to move forward.
Okay. Um, paying for the discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Passes the Senate. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. All right, uh, structural engineers, PSA, sergeant engineering.
Good afternoon, council. Um, I think the purpose of this memo is probably pretty well-known. Uh, this is a PSA with a structural engineering firm who possesses a skillset that we don't currently retain in-house to evaluate city structures, um, basically for a one condition therein and if there's recommendations moving forward. I think it is, uh, appropriate to highlight, um, that this is what we're going to have as tasks. Task one, what we're looking at is approximately five vehicular bridges in 2021 and really evaluate those structural integrity. Task number two, uh, is forward looking to several rail bridges in 2020. Task number three is looking at the city pier railing replacement. Task number four is the Laurel Street stair replacement project. And then task number five is just to provide on-call services associated with developing, um, plans to move forward as we identify issues. Essentially, until those engineers get out there and take a look at the structural integrity of these facilities or any of the geotechnical conditions, it's, uh, it's difficult to say what level of effort, um, they might get a little fringe or they have to look off of. That amount was twenty thousand dollars, um, maybe grants to be, but I don't think that that's a very high dollar amount. So the full total amount, um, and our recommendation that we would like to push forward, uh, is that you would approve and authorize the city manager to sign the 2020, 2021 structural engineering professional services agreement with sergeant engineers in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and to make minor modifications to the agreement if necessary. With that, myself or Delk, I would be happy to answer any questions.
That's all, any questions?
So I can't tell you how excited I am that I'm at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. I would be able to tell them that we have approved hiring a structural engineer to provide design plans for the city here replacement for the railings. Because every, every chamber of commerce meeting, I get asked and needled about this. So I'm very excited that this is moving forward.
So what sergeant will be doing on that is coming up with three different designs for silica, and so once we have that, we'll make sure that we forward that to council.
Awesome. And then the question I have is about the Laurel Street stair replacement.
I don't know if you want to talk?
We, I know we talked about that in the one whole work session. We talked about what kind of the scope would be of the redesign.
So that's what we've been hiring them for. And they're, they're talking with them, they kind of said the same thing, like, kind of, uh, evaluating maybe kind of three different options, designs to kind of look at. Uh, as you see here, the thirty-four thousand dollars will be coming out of the CFP for next year. To actually do the entire full design, we're going to need an additional sixty thousand dollars, which will be applied for logic tax money for.
Thank you for saying that because I was going to say that's one of the priorities, the zigzag and the stairs. And I was kind of surprised that the zigzag is not on here.
So the zigzag is in the CFP and I want you to know that just in, within my general fund budget, I hired sergeant to do a structural, um, report on both the stairs and the zigzag. So once I have those, I'll also pass this on.
Great, and hopefully logic tax will help us with that.
Yeah, the zigzag for instance, unfunded number fifty-four. Do we have a fee schedule for that spot? I mean, no, it's not in here, but on file with, between us and sergeant engineers. I mean, this is on-call, well, I can go on-call too, if I want, if I don't have the price.
So we do have hourly rates and I would assume that, um, the fee schedule is a to the C, it's not attached to here, but we, we can't enter into a contract. Um, and I would assume that our amazing legal department would not let us enter into a contract. We didn't have that information. So, um, we could definitely provide that if you wanted to.
No, okay, it's just already agreed upon then, okay? Thank you.
I appreciate that you did this as a, as a lump instead of piecemeal out, um, and, and maybe we'll save a little money by walking in this contract for 2021 now instead of in November of 2020. So I would just recommend authorize the city manager to sign a 2020, 2021 structural engineering professional services agreement with sergeant engineers in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and to make minor modifications to the agreement if necessary.
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Director Delkot for, um, you know, working on zigzag as well as stairs with this and for doing more of that, that district infrastructure now, panel is connecting through, really matters. And each block he spreads is, is a tenth of a mile. And so when we talk about, you know, removing access on any north-south street and expecting pedestrians to walk all the way around to just the next street over, it's not very far when you're in a car, but that is basically a quarter mile extra walk. Um, we talked about this, pedestrians will walk, that is walkable, but making the outcome accessible to the city for any reason.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Passes the Senate. All right, we are, I have council reports, Mike, Eric, just start.
Easy, no report.
Okay. Okay. Um, I didn't have a lot of council work between the last meeting and this meeting. I did have to send, um, let's see if I'm looking for alternates, um, to a couple weeks, um, because the, there was a lot going on at work. Um, the first couple weeks of school, of the college, and, uh, we're settling in, finally put it out, we've put out all the fires, um, so I'll be back to my regular committee work this month.
Let's see.
So, um, I'm obviously usually advise the committee and, uh, I'm really thankful for all the work that city staff put into that. Well, very soon still here, um, particularly very soon. Um, I read with you in the halls yesterday and you were like, I didn't house around there.
It was awesome.
Um, and so, um, yeah, thank you. I'm really thankful that we have plans that, or models that we can rely on, we can understand how they work and that, you know, we don't have to be like, oh, where's station number one, you know, thanks like a lot to us, like we can do it ourselves. Um, you know, regardless of what the actual outcome of rates are, um, the fact that we understand the process that we went through and how we got there is incredibly valuable by my mind. Um, so the ad hoc committee, I, I don't know if there's anything to report out there. I also attended, uh, kind of as an alternate for the mayor, the regional transportation plan, the marketing decisions I gave for. I would recommend that, um, September twenty, the RTPO, um, not above particularly page nine, it's kind of linked to our regional transportation improvement plan, uh, which I know is built with the state plan, and it's kind of a little good explanation from somebody in Kentsap, trained in regulation who, um, can explain how the process works there. And, um, also the RTPO is working on a big transportation plan for like twenty, forty or so, like twenty-year transportation plan. So that's, uh, out there, I think for that time, they had a couple of hearings, um, and the one here in Bridge Angels was attended. Um, there was a lot of discussion that the one in Shelton was, uh, unattended, so go to Bridge Angels. Yeah, if you care about transportation. The big thing that I, oh, one other thing before I mention that, um, I was seeing the Association of Washington Cities is doing events for, um, the artificials and probably your directors and city managers as well called the events of the City on TAC. It's open in swim on October tenth. Um, I've said I'm interested, but I also haven't been able to go to a lot of NUC events this year, so I wanted to be like, only if there's not three other council members, so I think that's... So I think that's why I told, uh, city entries back. But, you know, I, I want to encourage other council members to attend. It's just an evening swim on the tenth. And, you know, so other people, if they're going or not, like let's, let's make a plan and have a good representation of Los Angeles. Because they are coming all the way out here to swim, but they won't be as long as. And so, um, you know, I feel like we should, we should be there. Uh, if there are really people who want to go, I think they'll go. The big thing I did in the last two weeks was, uh, in the Fort Hills Conference in Waldo. And, uh, I really want to thank Commissioner Randy Johnson from the county, who was there and, you know, through whatever this communication would arise that the other person was going to be there. So it was really exciting when Randy walked in and I'm like, here in Waldo. Boy, there's so much. So this was a conference of local elected officials, state legislators, and, um, like state policy analysts, um, like Department of Commerce chimed in. Some law professors do research on housing rights. You know, various advocates, like lovely Washington lawyer on housing rights and the tenants' union. And I learned a ton. I want to try to summarize without like taking hours. So Ted Kellor, which is the lay on this manager as well, the Department of Commerce's, like head of housing and, you know, certified geek basically, has been pushing into the correlations around homelessness and, and was driving the rise in homelessness. And I heard him speak twice in twenty seventeen. Once at our, um, House of Task Force, the county's House of Task Force, and another time at, um, uh, in Leaning or Jamestown, uh, that Austin's at as well and, uh, council member, Rand. And, um, that back in seventeen, he was saying, it's, it's, he was emphasizing the rental vacancy rates and like the rental vacancies were low and that's driving higher rent prices. And, um, so getting that rental vacancy rate up and really emphasizing that, you know, more smaller housing units might be part of that solution. This was a bit more cynical in a way because he was looking, he's been looking at these correlations, like what, what correlates with higher homelessness, what correlates with lower homelessness. And the thing he's been coming back to is kind of a structural relationship between rents and median incomes. And that the median income in an area is very strongly correlated to the lower quintile rent price. So like median income and then what, you know, the poorest twenty percent of the population are paying in rent. And the higher median income, the higher that rent for, you know, the median percentile. And trying, you know, and he'd love to bend that curve because that's, you know, kind of saying that the rent's structurally related to income. But he, you know, he has, you know, nationwide data, he's, he's kind of stuck on that or we're stuck on that. So there's something structural there with the affordable housing market. Washington is the fifth highest, uh, state for homelessness, uh, per capita. So we and other western states are a lot higher, particularly in unsheltered homelessness. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, eastern states tend to do shelter better, possibly because the consequences of getting outside are like, you know, death in one night. Whereas, you know, it's just type of, you know, you take twenty-five years and you're like. So what's driving that? Ted, in his Ted time, um, shared that in a good year in Washington, the building industry, developers build about forty thousand housing units a year. We, is sort of taking the population need and the housing unit availability, we're behind by about three years. So we're, we're down, you know, over a hundred thousand housing units. So structurally, we simply don't have permanent housing for all the people who are living without shelter or otherwise homeless. To make up that housing deficit means not just continuing good year housing growth by, uh, twenty thousand units statewide every single year. And he emphasized that's a good year, but we actually need to make up a three-year deficit in that building. So we're in trouble. You guys want to make a point, please, for me? Because it's, we've been talking about, okay, how do we do affordable housing? And, you know, one developer, Almond Affordable Housing in, um, in Vancouver, Washington, yeah, actually, I think it was also Representative Matt Crey, um, who talked about it, that, um, often local governments respond with, um, what would take care of that as trickle-down affordable housing policies. So, um, you know, somebody comments, hey, you know, this person's on the street and they need help. And we say, we're building affordable housing. And it's like, yeah, we're doing it. And they characterize that as trickle-down strategies. And that doesn't work. We shouldn't assume that that's going to work for the particular person who's homeless or experiencing homelessness. We talked about that phrase as well of somebody is homeless, it's just somebody is experiencing homelessness. It is a state of being of a permanent identity. And so I'm trying to incorporate that into the way I speak, that people experiencing homelessness. So for our housing policies to address people who are experiencing homelessness now in Los Angeles, we need to say, that person, what is it that they need to be housed? And build our housing policy for that if we actually intend to address people who are specifically chronic to homelessness on the street. If our housing policy is just, and I confess, I've been advocating this too, well, let's build a lot more affordable housing and that is all chronic homelessness, we're relying on this trickle-down strategy that is not effective for giving the people who are currently a homeless community off the streets into permanent supportive housing. So, um, Seattle University Law School has a, actually, I have to put that number five in. Has a homelessness rights advocacy project. There are a lot of studies there, although I've said it's a lot, uh, seattleu.edu slash HRAP, homeless rights advocacy project. And one of their recent studies, which is available there, titled the Permanent Supportive Housing Permanent Team Policy Brief, is, um, it's titled Pennywise, the Pound Foolish, How to Create Housing to Prevent the World Hurt. And basically that study, they looked at a lot of, I think it's kind of like a meta-study, what is the cost to government or if you care, not the cost to the taxpayer of leaving someone on the streets? And then what is the cost of permanent supportive housing? So the cost to leave somebody on the streets, and this is, you know, the extra first responder, the extra EMT, emergency departments at the, at the hospital, police, courts, probation, jail time, sweeps and cleanups, all of that. You know, on the council, we know, you know, we got in a shot and, and, and streaked. And we're getting a lot of communication, I'm sure staff is as well about that issue. So all of those costs that go into the cost of leaving somebody on the street, it comes out to, and of course, it depends on the jurisdiction, all of this. It's detailed in Pennywise, but we have a foolish study. Fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars per person per year. So that's how much we're spending. And it's hard to measure, but it's the nature, per person who's on the streets of Los Angeles. In comparison, permanent supportive housing costs about sixteen thousand dollars to twenty-two thousand dollars. And then you look at what, what, what you're getting for that. And the research shows that people make housing or benefit from services. So, um, you know, we might provide health services, we might provide substance abuse services. But once people are, are housed, they pursue services and treatment at higher rates after having housing. And the services are more effective. So it, it's, it's really supporting what people call housing first. But really what it says, these numbers say, if it costs at least fifty thousand dollars a year for somebody to be homeless, that's what we're paying now. Like leave the city, the hospital, county jail, county courts, you know, we are all paying that now. And instead, we could be paying sixteen thousand to twenty-two thousand dollars per person per year for permanent supportive housing, which is going to have a much better likelihood of improving that person's life. So, I mean, the challenge is, well, we can't afford it. And, and, you know, we say this all the time, we're going to get into our budget. We can't afford to address this housing issue at the scale we need to. But the thing is, we can't afford to do what we're doing now. We just don't know it because we're not measuring it. So that's huge. One more thing I want to make sure I talked about. The housing construction deficit was huge. And I think it's just a structural barrier for us. So, you know, we look at our rates, we talked about this at the last council meeting. You know, we need three thousand six hundred housing units to make population growth the next fifteen years. And we're doing, you know, somewhere between three, well, we need to basically triple to quadruple our rates of permitting for that to just keep pace, let alone make up the deficit. Right? Let alone make up the statewide deficit of housing. Triple down housing, um, you know, we need to get beyond that. And I confess, I did an advocate of what I know and I understand be a strategy that's not effective. But really, we need to know who is unsheltered. We need to assess their needs and we need to triage, we need to alert them out of, um, the emergency response system. But we understand that often people who are at that stage are the ones who have already exhausted all their diversions. They've already, you know, overstayed at that friend's house, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, is it a possibility of interim housing? There's a lot of discussion about some of these things that other cities have been doing, structured impantments, tiny house villages. But that's only a bit as effective as the available, the long-term opportunities. One of the things that I kind of came to terms with, and, um, I don't know that this was, you know, kind of the consensus of the group or not, but, but I'm worried that if we don't solve the permanent housing situation, these, you know, tent villages or tiny house villages that we're designing to be temporary, we're, we're actually making them permanent. We're making permanent slums because we're not really going to actually put the effort in to address the problem. So, um, I think Sarah Rankin from Seattle U said homelessness reflects policy choices. It's not inevitable. And they put it out too, like people have been working in this for a long time. That, sorry, just like we're doing this ourselves, you know? So, um, nineteen seventy-four, there was a surplus of housing. There weren't people looking in the streets. So, you know, we look back and we're like, hell, there's always homelessness. No, there hasn't. Like we, um, have been making policy choices and it's not catching up with us. And, you know, we're spending all our time, you know, moving table tables because people are using them and not using them appropriately. The last rare ring adventure is in the Titanic. And we need to dodge that and we need to really buckle down with how we can create permanent housing at a rate that we're simply not doing now.
Thank you for that report. I'll, the quote that I came on just recently was the belief that what currently exists must necessarily exist is the acid that corrodes all visionary thinking. And I think that a lot of the points you made are about people just, uh, assuming that the status quo is, is there for a reason and just shouldn't continue. To highlight a point that you made, Washington State is both in the top five of home, no matter how you count it, in the top five homelessness, whether you have per capita or general numbers, we're not in the top five most populous states. Yet we are, you know, we are in the top five of states that basically have people experiencing homelessness. And, and I think that one thing that many people don't understand or realize is this is largely a west coast phenomenon. Other states that are in the top five of highest rates of homelessness are California or even Nevada, Hawaii. The lowest rates are east coast, specifically northeast Maine, Rhode Island, New York, Massachusetts. They have the lowest rates of homelessness. So this is a, this gets back to urbanism and how we designed a legal system that prevented people from accessing housing through zoning laws. So when I advocate strongly against development restrictions, it's because of those facts. Development restrictions create homelessness. And I, I would only push back because we're getting into this weird policy discussion right now for science politics. When you talk about trickle-down housing, you, there's many policy problems that we need to solve. It's okay to focus on one or two of them and let other people focus on others. There is a housing deficit. It's fine to try to solve that problem. And that doesn't mean you're ignoring the problem of the intake and coordinated entry. One of the meetings that I just went to today with this homelessness task force, and we talked a lot about those problems. One of the things that we talked about extensively today that was somewhat contentious was, how do we get county commissioners to acknowledge that they have a role in solving homelessness in Clough County? And they cannot just delegate that role to the task force made up of the executive directors of social service agencies. It's inappropriate. And, and we sent our, our five or ten-year plan to eliminate homelessness to Department of Commerce for year comment, our first draft. And one of the things they said was, hey, in this one section, we noted that one of the responsible parties is the county commissioners. But that's the only section in which we noted that they're a responsible party. Why aren't they a responsible party in other sections? And they were right. And, and the only reason that they made that comment was because I advocated strongly to quote that as a responsible party, that they should do a housing inventory in the county. And they should, you know, be involved in revision, prioritizing policies, um, in the county. Anyway, so those two task forces today, we did spend a lot of time discussing our plan for Congress to eliminate homelessness wish. It's a frustrating thing, you know, in that committee sometimes because we talk about all the plans and talk about, uh, things that I think should be at the commissioners' level. And, um, the commissioners should not be just asking us for oversight of how funds are spent, but they should be providing policy direction on how to set funds. And they should provide policy direction on how to change policies so that we have less homelessness. Okay, one of the other meetings I attended is PA four. We discussed, um, the wayfinding project. That was, uh, a positive meeting. And I think that we're going to get some pretty good products. The, um, consultant that we hired always had really good outside the box thinking. And then they came to breakfast at my restaurant and I really wanted to joke, did you find the place okay? Who'd be on problem finding my place? But they're alike. And I did, I did think that the one takeaway that I had, I attended Congress meeting in place of cake. And, um, I think the one thing that I really want to highlight to all of these agencies that we talked about. One of the, one of the programs that we discussed at Congress meeting was a program in which they educate children about how to use transit, which I think is a social good. But it's also basically marketing, right? It's basically saying, hey, use the bus, it's a bit of a year round town. And they talked about whether or not it influences ridership. And they're not sure. I don't know if you're sure.
Yep.
And, and they said, you know, even if, even if it doesn't influence ridership that much, it's still a good program. And it's right now kind of in early years, I think. It's a pilot, I believe, Steve, who's responsible for it in the first place. And, um, you know, it's a good educational program. I wish that I can talk to you, the bus and the skate, so I could use it in college. And like, there is a way to use a bus if you're hit. But one of the points that I made that, you know, we need to make over and over in these meetings is it's not good enough to market a bad product. If you have a product that's not meeting the needs of your consumer or, or whoever, your constituents, you need to work on your product. And that's something that we focus on our L-TAP policy is where are the, where is our product coming short of the need? And as, as a transit agency, I think they need some pushback to understand that their product is not as good as it needs to be. If we're going to, uh, make the change that we need to make in our community, we need a transit agency that is effective, that is doing, you know, one of the, agency that is effective, that is doing, you know, one of the issues that comes up, I don't want to get too political, that our, our candidate forums have been attending a lot of for our new council, and one of the issues that comes up routinely for the port of Port Angeles is air traffic to and from Port Angeles. And, you know, I get the feeling, I don't want to speak ill of anyone, but sometimes it feels like other communities have created situations in which they have a market that's too small to support air service, and so they subsidize it to fly empty airplanes. And we have a transit agency that actually has done a good job in, in getting transit off of the peninsula with the straight shot. They're moving, one of the other things we talked about at the meeting was moving to expand that program in the future for more rides. So I think we need a lot more public pressure from us as the city council, and from us as public practices and city or transit agency, we need a better product. Climate transit is a way to help the vacuum of transportation. It's not perfect, because the air service provides other functions that I understand that climate transit can't. But for actual transporting human beings, it is a good way to transport human beings. So it needs to be more effective. So then when we do market it to our young children, they go, wow, this is a good way to get around. Because a lot of them might think, ride once or twice, and then realize this doesn't meet my needs. And then they don't care why I'm using the transit. So those are the three main meetings. I don't think that I had really any other major ones, but I have a bunch of meetings this week, so.
Thank you. I wanted to learn about Green Week, Green Week supports the city of Port Angeles' goals to improve water quality, habitat, and community assets, to a holistic view of watershed planning that promotes inclusion, coordination, and a broad definition of watershed. So they are going to do a watershed tour Saturday, October 5th, from 12 to 4:00. So please, they're going to meet at the National Park Parking Lot. So please attend. The goal is to develop a list of priority projects and to improve the water quality, model our habitat and community assets while engaging the whole Port Angeles community. So your input is definitely needed. So please be there Saturday the 5th at noon at the parking lot at the National Park. And then I did want to just comment, I'd really, you know, we had heard about the bench being, a bench for, some cook had a plaque for the draftees and for the veterans. And I was very, very excited to hear that it was legalized, and hopefully, I was just told that hopefully sometime in October, that will be replaced. Just sad is me to know that we have, it was a right-wing bench, and that people just, you know, are willing to do it. The other thing is, we, the IT staff was able to create a mayor's email. So it's mayor@city.cyp.us. And so I haven't started yet, but I'm hoping this week I'll have some time. And so hopefully that will allow some continuity from mayor to mayor, which will be nice. And then the committee that I wasn't able to attend the boards and building committee is looking into all the store issues for that building. And I know they've been asking the city staff for some help about those buildings. And that is my report. So I'm going to pass on to the city manager.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Before I jump into the reports, one suggestion would be that Mayor Kidd did not call in, so perhaps the council wishes to excuse her. I know I wouldn't be appropriate to do that.
I'm going to excuse council member Kidd for that.
Sorry.
Okay. And if you have a discussion, all of us would pay a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anything? Assistant Attorney.
And I just want to, very, very, Madam Mayor, you mentioned the Green Week project, that's exciting to see that the community will have an opportunity to take a tour of two of our primary creek core emerging in town. And that information is also posted on our website, if anybody wishes to read that information. If you didn't catch it, ultimately, it's up on the website. I did want to mention that the city's on tap again is next Thursday. I don't believe this time we've gotten a lot of R S V Ps, but council, please get back to us this week, if that's something that you plan to attend. In addition, I wanted to provide a reminder that we do have a closed session. And before we turn, we want to make sure that reminder is there. And then finally, I wanted to turn it over to Director Recy to provide an update on community volunteer fees.
Council, I recognize the time, so I'm going to be very quick. A sheet of paper was just put in front of you, and it's really just providing you with information on a recent research project my department has completed, thanks to that brief interview we had from Washington University. So the interest here is just we wanted to see where we were in relationship to similar sized towns, or also the region, in terms of our fees. So that's, that's our application fees for development review, or land use applications, as well as our building permit valuations. So the charts in front of you are really just doing that quick comparison. This is in no way a recommendation of any sort to you, it's just to relay information. The cities selected were similar in size or median household income overall. We were low, quite low for our land use application fees, building permit valuation slightly lower. Now, just ask me to compare yourself, compare ourselves to swim in Clalow County, I think would be a good close comparable, just because we do recognize that construction here at the peninsula is unique in terms of cost. And then lastly, what is not encouraging me, because the table was too, too large to print, is just our mechanical permit, permits and plumbing permits seem to be average, if not a little bit high. So there's some interesting information there as well. But this is a result of just council asking about revenues, as well as there was a earlier request, I believe this year, just to have you receive some information about our fees. So we're happy to continue that at a future time if the council wishes.
Thank you. Good. Thank you.
The real only takeaway that I had is that we don't have pre-application or site line review. So that seems to be the area in which we could have future conversation. Because it does, I do, it does seem like they are low, or reasonable, at least. We can give an argument that are reasonable.
Thanks. Ms. Yarwood coming?
You often wonder what is the slowdown in housing, and what is the cost of housing when it's done? I think it's Ray Kram.
Okay. Anything more? All right, let's move to second, the second number comment period. So if anybody in the audience would like to state your counsel, and please step up. All right, seeing none, I guess we will move into our closed session. So thank you all for attending, and so we'll be cashing out of the closed session soon.